It is now past 7:00 PM. I declare the meeting open, there being a quorum. We have a zero quorum, so as long as the clerk and the moderator are here, we can open. This is the first session of the 2014 Annual Town Meeting. Hopefully, we'll only have one session, but given the large warrant, we may be going to two or perhaps more nights. My name is David Walrath. I am the town moderator. I'll be moderating the meeting tonight. I ask everyone to stand up if you wish and join in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could we start the slides, please? So, for those who are regular Town Meeting members, I apologize. We'll be going through a lot of slides that you're familiar with, but we ask that no food or beverages here in the auditorium. If you'd like to have a drink or have something to eat, the meeting is being televised in the cafeteria, and you can certainly have it there. Obviously, no smoking allowed on stool grounds. Those of you like me that have one of these things, please mute it or turn it off. Under debate, we ask no applause or outbursts. This is a legislative session. I understand people feel emotional about issues, but we like to keep it very professional here. And finally, when you're voting or coming or going, you need to remember your voter ID card and remain seated while you're voting. Next slide. Around 10:30, probably between 10:00 and 10:30, we'll see where we're at, and I will ask for a sense of the meeting, whether or not we want to continue tonight or go to another night. Again, it's a large warrant, so I expect that it'll either be a very long night or more than one night. Next slide, please. Again, I'm the town moderator. I'll be moderating most of the meeting. I do have the privilege and opportunity to nominate a deputy moderator, and this year, I would like to nominate Laura Spear, who moderated part of the Fall Town Meeting. All in favor of Laura Spear as deputy moderator, please raise your cards. Aye. All opposed?
We'll let it go.
I will call that unanimous. Occasionally, I might miss one or two people. It takes seven votes to ask me for a formal vote, so I'm not disrespecting you. I might just miss you if there's fewer than one or two, but you're welcome to challenge my vote at any time. Gary Horowitz has accepted being assistant moderator. Both Laura and Gary are sitting up here on either side of Mike Kapczynski, and if you have any questions about procedure or what's going on, you're welcome to ask them. Finally, behind me, we have the town clerk, Linda Hathaway, and her assistant Kay Desmond, and they'll be taking the minutes of the meeting. Next slide. I'm not going to introduce everyone, but in the table in front of me, we have the Board of Selectmen, along with our town administrator and town council. And I believe Susan is not here. We don't have the administrative assistant. Next slide, please. The Finance Committee over here on your left, they'll be making a recommendation on each article at the meeting tonight. Next slide, please. On any capital articles, and we have a definition of capital in our town bylaws, the Capital Planning Committee will be making a recommendation to you, and they're sitting primarily over here on your right towards the front. Next slide. We'll be hearing from members of the Nishoba School District Administration and also from the Minuteman School District Administration, but I wanted to recognize our school district representatives. Next slide. On a number of slides, we'll be hearing from the Planning Board, and they're primarily sitting towards the front on the middle-left. Next slide. We have a number of non-voters addressing the meeting. Although some by right can address, by tradition, anyone that's not a voter, we do ask that the meeting give them permission to address the meeting. So these school district employees from Nishoba and Minuteman are here, and I'm going to ask the meeting if they may address the meeting. All in favor of these people being able to address the meeting, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor. Next slide. We also have a number of municipal employees that will have requested to address the meeting on various articles. I'll ask a vote on whether they can address the meeting. All in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed, please raise your cards. I'll call that unanimously in favor of those employees addressing the meetings. Next slide, please. I'd like to make a general thanks to the town volunteers and officials from this past year. I'm not going to go through all of the retirements. They were playing on a pre-Town Meeting slide deck that we might replay at some point during the meeting. We're also looking for a number of volunteers on a number of boards, so if you could add that, Mike. You can look on the town website under Opportunities. If you just hit Return, it should pop up. There we go. I decide to be clever in my PowerPoint. So, in particular, I'd like to point out that both the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee have openings for associates, and I believe one of the Finance Committee members, who's a voting member, is not looking for reappointment, so we are looking for people in those boards. If you'd like to assist the town, please talk to me sometime when you see me not up here, or if you're interested in other opportunities, again, go to the website. Next slide, please. I'd like to thank the folks that are helping Town Meeting here. There's the tellers, and I believe the town clerk is looking for one or two more, one more teller. And I'd like to thank Mike Kapczynski, who is working brilliantly the computer, as usual. We have two new folks, Jonathan Daisy and Lee Pappas, who have been working on the sound and video, and we'd like to thank them, and as usual, Lou Halpern, who's been training them in. Next slide, please. And we'd like to thank Linda Stokes and Stowe TV for recording and televising this Town Meeting, for those that can't make it, or those of you who might have missed bits tonight and wish to go back and re-watch it. Actually, I should add, a plumber I had at my house, who was a young guy from Hudson, was watching a Stowe Town Meeting. He said, "I think I recognize you for something." And so, we actually do get an audience outside of Stowe. Next slide, please. A public interest comment. The Spring Fest Committee is looking for volunteers. If you're interested, please talk to Karen Kelleher, I believe is here, or -- oh, yeah, Karen's right up here in the second row with a white jacket on. So anyways, if you're interested, that's in a couple of weeks. Please consider it. Next slide. So, debate. If you're interested in making comments, if you're new to Town Meeting, we again request respectful debate, no applause or outbursts, although if we're recognizing someone, obviously you can applaud. Please identify yourself. My name's David Walrath, Samuel Prescott Drive. Speak clearly. I get the opportunity to do a sound check before, but if you talk at the microphones, please get close to the mic and make sure that you're talking loudly, otherwise not everyone in the hall can hear you. Please keep your comments related to the article at hand. I understand people feel passionately about many subjects, but again, this is a business meeting of the Stowe Legislature, and we want to keep things on the point that we're talking about. If you have any questions, ask me the question, and I will ask an appropriate official or other person to answer it. Again, this keeps it very formal. Avoid being repetitive. We ask not a long line of people making the same point over and over. Helps us get out earlier. Next slide, please. A couple things, some long-term Town Meeting voters apparently have forgotten. We ask you keep it under three minutes at the microphone. You do one thing per trip. You either make a comment, ask a question, or make a new motion, like an amendment, or ask to end debate, or whatever. If you try to do more than one, and there are other people out line, I'll ask you to politely go to the back of the line and wait until you come up again. And I'll typically ask someone who's a new speaker on the subject, I'll allow them the microphone before someone who's already addressed the subject. And finally, how to end debate? There's three ways to end debate. If there's no one left at the speakers, I'll just end debate and go to a vote. If we go more than a half hour, at approximately half-hour intervals, I will pause debate and ask if anyone that's a voter in the hall wishes to make a motion to end debate, or commonly called to move the question or call the question. But voters can also at any time ask to call the question. If you try to do it as the first speaker at a microphone on an article, I'll probably not recognize you, but if you think that things are getting repetitive, you don't have to wait for that half-hour break. And again, we ask that you keep things respectful. Oh, that's right. Two administrative notes. If you have any other questions about procedures, we have this handy Town Meeting Handbook. There are copies out on the Voter Information Table. And, second, late in the meeting, Article 49, there's a rather large and complicated change to the Minuteman Regional Agreement. There are annotated copies of the regional change, again, out on the Voter Information Table if we get to that tonight. You may wish to acquaint yourself with that. It was not printed in the warrant because it's quite long. And finally, for those that are familiar with the Assessor's Office clerk, Tina Salvo, her husband passed away on Friday, Lawrence Salvo. We have no word yet on services, but for those interested, keep an eye out, probably in one of the local newspapers. And with that, I believe we are ready for a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reading of the warrant and the return of the constable thereon be waived but may depart of the record of this meeting, and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter instead of reading each article in its entirety.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any debate or questions on the motion? Seeing no debate, we can go to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? I will call that unanimously in favor. Do you have a spare pen? Thank you. Sorry, I need to make a notation there. I believe we are ready for a motion on Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reports of the selectmen and other officers and committees of the town be accepted as printed in the 2012. Is that right? Is it 2012? It should be 2013, right? All right, that should be 2013. As printed in the 2013 Annual Town Report and as written -- oh, sorry, as accepted. I'm going to start again, Mr. Moderator. It's been a rough day.
We were -- I was just wondering with that, with the clerk.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reports of the selectmen and other officers and committees of the town be accepted as printed in the 2012 Annual Town Report and as written in the 2013 Annual Town Report.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. It was a little confusing because it is the 2012 Annual Report. Is there any debate on the motion under this article? Seeing none, we can go to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All in favor? All opposed? I will call that unanimously in favor of the motion. Article 2, Mr. Salvi, I believe.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reports of the special committees be accepted as printed in the 2012 Annual Town Report and in the 2013 Annual Town Report.
Is there any debate under the article, under the motion, I should say? Seeing none? We can go to a vote. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? I will call that unanimously in favor of the motion under Article 2. Article 3, Mr. Kern.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash to the snow and ice account the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of balancing the fiscal year 2014 deficit in the snow and ice account.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any debate under the article? Any questions? Seeing none, we can go to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? I will call that unanimously in favor of the motion. My apologies. Before we can accept that, I need to ask for the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Article 4, the Wage and Salary Schedule, Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article 11 of the general bylaws of the town personnel administration by deleting Section 20H, the existing salary schedules A, B, C, D, and E, and inserting in place thereof new schedules A, B, C, D, and E as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Mr. Eckle from the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any debate on the motion under Article 4? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor of the motion under Article 4. Before we do Article 5, I'm going to ask for the Finance Committee's presentation on the budget. We could bring that up. Mr. McManus is going to do a presentation.
Thank you, Peter McManus, for the Finance Committee. Swing away, Mike. I think we got this one. That don't work. Right. Fiscal 2015, all right. Ninth year in a row, we will not need a -- all right. Thank you. Off to a roaring start here. Okay. We do have a healthy surplus, which led me to put the wrong number in the warrant, but we'll get back to that. Full debt service for center really was in last year, but pretty big numbers, so we just want to point it out again. More capital articles than requested last year, not including some of the bigger ones which are separate articles. The savings rate continues good, and we have a healthy over 8% of the budget as savings. Okay. I don't know if anyone can see that. Anticipated revenue. If you look in your warrant, in our report, you'll see where I put the wrong number in. So, property taxes, a little over 23 million. Once again, that's 89% of the income. Local receipts are up somewhat. The majority of that is excise tax, so new car purchases help out. State aid is projected to be exactly level, and the other savings is down a little bit, mostly because we're starting to use some of that income to pay down some of the capital So, the overall revenue growth, little better than 4.5%, well within the levy capacity. Let me just point out here, if you look on the top of page 7 on your warrant, total expenditures, I had the number in there which included the million-plus-dollar surplus. So, that number, the 27-million number, is incorrect. The 25, 978 is what's actually requested in spending. There we go. 89% property taxes. Local receipts up a tiny bit, but not even enough to change this. Says it doesn't change much. In fact, the only thing that changes is the year on this one. Okay. Post-spending, just to write on 60%, is in the education. Almost all of that in the Shoba Regional, which is up almost $800,000 for the year, about 5.5%. If you take that down, the total spending for the year is up 1.1 million, so that one-line item up there is about 3/4 of it. Minuteman's actually down a little bit, if you see. That's an enrollment-related drop. Full-town budget's only up 1.9%, almost entirely in salaries. Debt service, almost level, up a touch. Special articles, up a bit. Capital articles, capital planning, we'll go through, as will the presentation, so we won't spend much time on that. 742 roughly has been asked for. Of course, it will depend on what actually gets voted to see what that number is. And the tax recap number, the majority of that is our share of the county retirement and a couple other smaller items, mosquito control and so on, but not really up. So, total spending for the year, including what we went through, up about 4.5%. Okay, this one doesn't change much either. Right on 60% goes to the education. Town taking up the majority of the rest of it, at just under 6 million there, and the debt service is creeping up. And we'll see what happens with the capital articles later. Okay, this one, I could have done a lot of things here. We didn't change much. This is the debt service peaking right about now, as you can see, staying level for the next five years. Starts to drop off in 2020, 2021. And we're going to go into this a lot more later when we hear about some of the other articles, but in working through the needs of the fire station, library, et cetera, trying hard to get past that hump so that we can keep it level, balancing that against what might be higher interest rates, higher construction costs, but overall, trying to keep that under, you know, 6% of the budget there and keep it fairly level. I think we're going to be able to do it, between spending down some of it with some of our savings, using some bond anticipation notes for a couple of years to push it out. But that is the goal. People have been working hard, and I think we're on our way to doing that. Here are the capital articles. I believe capital planning is going to be going through this, but I won't spend too much time on them. The bigger items, the HVAC system in the police station has never really worked right, so we're told, and is causing a lot of difficulty there in terms of what room people can work in, where they have to go, who's hot, who's cold. And the other bigger one is the highway replacing the six-wheel dump truck. It's actually fairly regular maintenance there. They're going for a new one this year, as the used ones are a little obsolete and also cost over $100,000 for a new one. But again, capital planning, we'll go through those. Okay, this is our savings, stabilization fund and the free cash. Little over 2 million right now. We have been funding this each year, and it's a great asset to have. It helps with our bond rating. It helps with flexibility in spending, so it's probably not going to go a lot higher. We're going to use some of that extra cash to pay down things, such as some of the design funds that they get passed. Okay, so what we're just trying to say in here is the spending that you vote on tonight is what's going to determine the tax rate, not the other way around. We'll take what we have to raise, the assessment, and then that will determine the tax rate. Okay. So, in the short term, a 4.5% increase this year, a little higher than it's been lately, but we think a pretty reasonable budget. The five-year average is at 3.3%, and that was up last year, as you remember, was a little over 7%. So, been creeping up, but if you look at it over rolling five-year average, I think we're doing pretty well. We still have a lot of room within our levy capacity. And within our borrowing as well. The center debt is now fully on the books as of last year, and as we said, the balance in the savings account's pretty good. And longer term, we're still not a lot of new growth to help out there. Our existing borrowing is okay, more than okay. Our bond rating just got raised about a month ago, but obviously, any additional borrowing we vote will impact that, and we went through the debt schedule. No real relief there until about 2020. So, that is the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. That's better. Thank you. So, for Article 5, the way we've traditionally done this is we will go through page by page the line items, and if anyone wishes to hold one of the lines for debate, just yell out "hold" loud enough so that I can hear it. And if you have a -- I'll ask, is this a quick question, which you can ask, or that you would like to hold it for debate? If you hold it, we'll hold it until later. If it's a quick question, we'll see if we can answer it right then and there. Is there any questions on this process? We're not the consent calendar, we're the budget. Yep? So... I think it's the chart with the... Yep, this is, this is the one. So, on page eighteen of your warrant, I will start. Pardon?
Can we have the motion?
Oh, do you want the motion?
Please.
Okay. Uh, so, we've been asked for the motion first, so the motion under Article Five. Mr. Moderator.
I move that town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-three million, seven-hundred-and-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, as recommended by the town administrator and selectman for Items One through seventy-five inclusive, as printed in the warrant under the column entitled FY twenty-fifteen Budget Town Admin/Selectman Recommended. Each item to be considered a separate appropriation for the purposes designated and the same to be expended only for such purposes.
So, we have a motion and a second. The finance committee, do we have a recommendation?
Hello? Finance committee recommends approval of this, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. So, we'll go back. On page eighteen, under General Government, Line Items One through Five, do we have a hold on any of those? On page nineteen, Line Items Six through Twelve. On page twenty, Line Items Thirteen through Twenty. On page twenty-one, Line Items Twenty-one through Twenty-nine. On page twenty-two, Line Items Thirty through Thirty-five. On page twenty-three, Line Items Thirty-six through Forty-three. On page twenty-four, Line Items Forty-four through Forty-nine. On page twenty-five, Line Items Fifty through Fifty-seven. If I pass by something that you're interested in, you can always call out an earlier number. On page twenty-six, Line Items Fifty-eight through Sixty-six. On Line Item, uh, on page twenty-seven, I'm sorry, Line Item Sixty-seven through Seventy-two.
Seventy-one and seventy-two.
Okay. Seventy-one and seventy-two, we are holding. Is that for debate, or do you just have a quick question? Sure. And finally, on page twenty-eight, Line Items Seventy-three through Seventy-five. So, the current motion is... All of Article Five withholds on Line Items Seventy-one and Seventy-two. So, I'm going to ask that we have the presentations on those two line items first before we go to a vote. Line forty-eight. Is this a quick question, you said? Uh, if you could come up to the microphone, please?
Chris Hayes, fifty-three, Whispering Way. On just a couple of these lines, and forty-eight's a good example, there's an increase of about thirty or so percent. Is that a single, are we adding a, an additional resource there? Will we go from about fifty-nine thousand to about seventy-seven or seventy-eight thousand? Or is there something else that's changed in the environment?
Mr. Wrigley, could you answer that?
I believe I can. With respect to Line Forty-eight, what I've agreed to do at the request of the cemetery commissioners is to, with respect to the cemetery superintendent, what you have in Line Forty-eight are all the wages and salaries. That would be the superintendent and what at the moment are called two seasonal cemetery workers. The request by the cemetery commission was twofold. One was to reclassify the cemetery superintendent into a higher classification, if you go back to the schedule in the front of your warrant, in that first schedule, and I agreed with it. The superintendent of, the cemetery superintendent for years has been in a lower position classification than I believe the person's worth, and incrementally have been, with small amounts, increasing it, and decided in support of their request to reclassify that, meaning the step schedule now has been moved forward. And he's being put in the minimum salary range of a new classification, together with, I agreed to reclassify an assistant superintendent's position instead of just two workers, with the hope and expectation that we can groom somebody to replace the cemetery superintendent in the years to come. I beefed up the wage rate for that person. So, we have an increase in wage through reclassification for the superintendent, and his total salary for next year is the minimum, and it's true of what was a seasonal worker now becoming assistant superintendent and a cemetery worker who's gone up to fourteen-seventy-five. All three of those increases are in there for the total that you've got.
Are we likely to, we likely to see further, future years, like the same kind of increase on things like this?
No, I, to be truthful, this has been a long time coming.
Okay.
I believe in budget incrementalism. I'm a show-me person. I hate to jump too fast, too large, and then find out that expectations can't be met. But in this case, I will just tell you, we get more out of our small cemetery group than, or as much as anybody else in town, and, um, I really believe this is commensurate, this increase, um, with the work that they do and the value. Before this superintendent was hired, there wasn't a year that went by, especially around Memorial Day, where I didn't get complaints to my office about the conditions of the cemeteries, primarily from people who used to live here, but have folks buried in the cemeteries coming back and complaining about it. Not saying I don't get complaints, but never Memorial Day now, and they work for one full-time and two-part-time folks, we get more than a value out of that. So, that's what occurs. So, all of that is in that total. And...
Thank you. I think that more than satisfies my question. Can I ask you one question about Line Ten, if you'd allow me?
Sure.
Same kind of increase, where we see an increase of more than twenty percent. We went from fifty thousand to sixty...
Which, which line?
Line Ten.
Line Ten.
From fifty thousand to about sixty-five thousand or sixty-four thousand, five hundred. That's greater than twenty percent. Things like that just seem like outliers unless we've changed staffing or something else.
Well, you're talking the town accountant salary.
Uh, it says accountant salary, fifty thousand to sixty-four thousand, Line Ten.
Right. Well, that, that, the sixty-four thousand is the request that she made. We're only supporting the two percent at fifty-one oh ninety-three. So, she went from fifty oh ninety-one to fifty-one oh ninety-three.
So, the third column is what you're supporting?
Yes. That's, that's the recommended budget, but we do include for those who make requests, what they requested, unless they want to change it during the deliberative process, which often occurs.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And I should add, I forgot one of my administrative notes. We do have a form, if anyone does wish to make an amendment. We have a new, nice, four-part form that the town clerk put together for us. Uh, we do require that amendments be reduced to writing before they're brought forward. So, on the other two held articles, I see Ernie Hool, the principal from Minuteman Tech. Could we load up, I believe we have a presentation for Minuteman that I'm sure he'd be very happy to give. And if we could ask if you could, uh, yeah, Principal Hool, if you could go up to the center microphone.
Good evening. Just to get myself settled here. Good evening, Mr. Moderator, town officials, and to the residents of Stowe. My name is Ernest Tool. I'm the principal of Minuteman High School, and I'd like to give you a brief presentation on the school budget for the, for this year, FY fifteen. Uh, first, I'd like to start off by saying thank you for letting me, allowing me to present to you this evening, and start off with some great news to tell you about just two of your students that, uh, over the weekend were part of a contingency of sixty-one students from Minuteman that actually attended a Massachusetts State Skills USA competition. Uh, out of those sixty-one students, two students from Stowe, uh, there were many others from Stowe, but there were two that actually placed and won medals in their respective competitions. The first one was Miss Brianna Ganemian, who won a silver medal for robotics and automation technology. Um, and the second individual was Mr. David Howe, who won a gold medal for commercial baking, and actually, Mr. Howe will be now preparing to go on to national competition in June in Wichita, Kansas. It's actually, it's actually in Kansas City, Kansas. Excuse me. So, first, uh, first slide. So, as you can see by the school budget, uh, the proposed budget is the nineteen-point-six-four-five million-dollar budget. Overall, it's an increase of five-point-nine. The increase to member assessments is only up three-point-eight percent, um, and overall over the past five years, it was, it's actually only been a one-percent increase each year over the past five years in assessments to individual, uh, in district town members. Next slide. The enrollment increase in the increase in the budget is due to a, um, future look at a potential of thirty-five-plus students, which is a six-percent increase in the budget, and some of the drivers from that increase is an increase in special education costs, district support to, direct support to students, unfunded mandates, I'm sure you'll hear more about even from the Nishoba budget, with the park, which is a program in which is going to take the place of the MCAS testing, and also the educator evaluation system. Uh, we're in the year of collective bargaining with our Faculty Association. We also have a proposed increase in health insurance of ten percent. And then we're looking at some capital costs. Um, as you know, we're looking at a building project. We're not anywhere near to having anything that could be decided upon to go forward, but what we're looking at is an aging building that we're trying to be financially responsible in having what we call bridge projects to fix those things that come up as needed. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is a slide of the Stowe estimated assessment over the past five years, um, and actually, this year for proposed FY fifteen, you'll see that the assessment has gone down by a little bit over, more than a hundred thousand dollars. Um, what you'll see is we have a total FTE count of twenty-two students. For next year, the assessment is four-hundred-and-forty-seven-seven-five-seven. Uh, the average per pupil high school cost is around eighteen thousand, um, and that's at Minuteman with no special education services. Uh, with special education services, it's around twenty-three thousand, four-twenty-one. Uh, transportation is at thirty-two, seven-seventy. Um, the capital cost would be at fifty-three thousand, nine-seven-four. There are no postgraduate students. That means that there are no students that have actually graduated high school that did not access Minuteman while they lived into the town of Stowe. Uh, we have none at Minuteman at this time. Uh, Minuteman is very proud of the middle school technology proj, uh, program that actually takes place in this building. Uh, Mr. Mark Rodequins, and we work very closely with George King, um, to provide STEM education to your middle school students, and actually grades six, seven, and eight. And that, uh, assessment is a hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-seven-zero-three, uh, for a total of six-fifty-seven-two-oh-four. Next slide, please. Um, as you can see, I won't go down all the, um, all the codes, but this is the FY fifteen proposed budget by state function code. Um, there are a few, um, lines that have some increases. You'll see in administration that there's a larger increase, and that was simply due to the fact that we've had to reallocate some positions. Um, during the negotiations of the faculty agreement, um, we had department heads and such that used to be part of the evaluation process. That now came upon the shoulders of administration fully, um, as well as some other reorganization within the administration, um, to support that and park and the other initiatives that we have going on. Um, you'll see instructional services, um, as a need for more support for students has risen, so has the budget. Um, those are probably the two most noteworthy. Next slide. This is the estimated revenue plan for Minuteman. As you can see, um, the assessments to town, the difference, um, from an FY fourteen to FY two thousand and fifteen, uh, approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-nine-fifty-four. Um, our chapter seventy-eight, um, we're going to be receiving around two million, roughly, slightly over. It's a ten-thousand-dollar increase. Transportation reimbursement, we're looking at about seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand, which is an increase of a hundred-and-sixty thousand and some change. Um, prior-year tuition, um, that would be the tuition that's collected from out-of-district students to help offset the balance to in-district member towns, and that's approximately eight-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand increase. And then, uh, current-year tuition, you'll see that's down to three-eighty-two. Um, it was recommended that we, um, bring the school district to become more financially stable and not depend on the current-year tuition, so that's why you see a larger increase from the prior-year tuition. Next slide. As you can see, over the past five years, this is the, um, how the out-of-district tuition revenue has been collected at Minuteman. Um, each year, um, you'll see from FY ten to FY fourteen, there was a significant increase. Part of that increase was the commissioner, who actually sets the out-of-district tuition. Uh, Minuteman and the Minuteman School Committee made the conscious decision to charge, um, the, uh, the highest level of out-of-district, or the chapter seventy-four tuition rate to out-of-district, uh, students. So, FY fourteen, the estimation is about six-point-three million. Next slide, please. Um, as you can see, we do have some projected capital expenditures that you can see that on the slide behind me. Um, some of the most primary things are things that, um, um, you know, normal wear and tear of a building, um, access road and parking lots. They've got a lot of potholes and such with the past few winters, uh, some guardrails, some light fixtures. Uh, the IRC, some of the primary areas in the building that have not, never been replaced, um, but have the most high-traffic areas, we're looking to replace that. We have a telephone system that on and off can cause us some glitches, so we're looking to replace that. Um, and as we go through it, you know, you can kind of see some of the annual things like copy machine and departmental equipment. Uh, next slide is just a, uh, slide that I've already talked about, about assessments of towns, so it's just in another form, and that's about it. I'm going to stop with there.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the Minuteman budget?
I'm Mark Jones. I live on Boxborough Road. Um, there are a couple of hot topics in relation to the budget as well as the future charter change. I'd like to lead into those for later discussion. Um, one is, what is the outstanding debt right now at Minuteman that you're servicing with the five-hundred thousand dollars a year for, um, debt service?
Yep. The, um, the outstanding, um, the current outstanding debt, long-term debt, is approximately four-point-one million dollars, and that was primarily due to the energy savings project that was done with Siemens. Um, the way the project works, it, as, there was no cost, it was originally born, no, um, bond taken out against that debt, um, and the savings from the energy savings from the building is what helps pay that debt down. Uh, as for short-term debt, we have around four-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, which is due to the feasibility study that's currently ongoing.
And how long does the, um, heating lease have to run?
Um, it's for an additional ten years.
Okay. And somewhat related, capital-related, is, um, do you have any word from the State Department of Education about, um, the potential for outside students to be, um, billed, you know, since, uh, for capital expenses at life as time goes along? I know there's been waiting for news on that.
What? Do I have a chance to...
Although this is slightly off-topic, I, you, I'm...
Go ahead.
So, um, we have heard back, uh, there's been several meetings. We have, I have very little information for you, but, um, what they're looking to do is, you heard about... about intergovernmental agreements in which there could be a potential capital fee that was assessed to out-of-district students or out-of-district towns. That agreement would occur, and it would happen between the Minuteman School Committee and then the school committee of that out-of-district town. Since that initial conversation has come to pass, the commissioner is actually looking to see that that capital facility fee be placed into regulation, that any out-of-district student, no matter where they are in the state and no matter what school they go to, that there would be a facility fee that would be able to be charged to go towards capital projects that were in the pipeline of an MSBA project, approved project.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or debate on line item 72? If not?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, principal. Do we have George King or Michael Wood to discuss Nishoba? We have.
They're not here. Bill Cleary, the facilities director, would be happy to talk on the article.
Okay. I don't know that we ever got a presentation to put up on the screen, but if you have numbers, you can.
I do believe one was sent over. You don't know? I can, I can just go through it on here.
If you could come up to the center microphone so that folks can see you.
Thank you. Bill Cleary with the Nishoba Regional School District Facilities Director. I apologize, we don't have a presentation. I thought that was sent over, but I'll try to do my best to present it to you. FY15, school committee approved budget, total budget is $50,516,022. That represents an increase of 3.72 percent over the FY14 budget. Offsets this year, $3,756,567. That includes federal grants, some federal grants for sped, special education, school choice, some circuit breaker reimbursements, and some kindergarten, state kindergarten grants. That gives us a net operating budget of $46,759,455, which represents a 3.78 percent increase over last year. How that breaks down, and again, I apologize, we don't have it up here, but I'll try to go line by line. Salaries, we had an increase this year of 1.51 percent, which is a total of $459,000 and some change. New personnel, we had a decrease this year of 31 percent, and the number we're moving forward on that line item is $389,000. Insurance, which also includes health insurance through some negotiations, we were able to only increase by 4.01 percent with a total of $282,000. Special education, we had an increase of 32.45 percent, which equals out to $475,000. Transportation, we have 2.55 percent. And then transportation for special education, we had an increase of 16.16 percent, which is a total of about 144,000. And that became, we had to renegotiate the contract this year due to the existing company that we had under contract going out of business. I'm sure you saw it in the news. Utilities, we had, we're looking at a 0.4 percent increase. This is due through some efficiency programs we've been working on across the district. So there's a total increase, a total line item there of 4,638. Facilities has an 11.71 percent increase of about $137,000, and this falls in mostly into the requirement to replace a section of the roof at the high school, a ballasted stone roof. Debt service, we have a decrease, 2.9 percent, a decrease of $20,000, and that carries the 2000 build-out of the high school as well as the 2013 field project. We have a $10,000 even sped assessment, and that's a state charge, so that's an even number. School choice, we have a $500,000 charge, and that's an estimate for kids going out of the district. We have an estimated number of about 80. We have a charter school projection of minus 13 percent, which is about minus $75,000 back to us, and that's a state projection. We have a salary reserve this year of $300,000 as an increase, and this is through our, we have a collective bargaining process this year, so we'll be going through contract negotiations. Other system-wide, we have a decrease of 18 percent, which is about $111,000. And then on site-based funds, we have an increase of about 17 percent, which is about $345,000. There's an increase of operating costs at the high school, as well as some of that decrease and increase shift back and forth between those two line items, as this year we renegotiated a new copier lease, and rather than being a district-based fund, it went to a site-based fund. So some of that money just shifted from one line item to the other. And that gives us our total, $50,516,022. Next is a pie chart, which won't do very good in this presentation, but I can hold, it looks about like this. So each year, the town assessments are calculated based on a formula specified by the state law and the regional agreement. Each town is first assessed at its local minimum contribution as determined by state statute, and then the balance of the operating funds are assessed by a percentage based on a five-year rolling population average. So the Stowe total assessment this year is $14,994,134. That's an increase of 5.63 over FY14, and it's a total dollar increase of $798,810. The capital assessment, capital items in the operating budget, which was that debt service line item, but for the high school, those items operate a little bit differently. Those costs are distributed using the enrollment information at a specific location, in this case, the high school, for the current fiscal year. The only capital item in, in the FY14 budget is the debt service payment for the high school, which we talked earlier. That amount is about $686,000 and is assessed to member towns using FY13 enrollment figures, and that's for the high school only. Again, the FY15 budget hopes to maintain high-quality services through the Nishoba Regional School District to its member towns, for, you know, to provide educator space, supplies and equipment within the buildings, STEM investments across the district, continued response to intervention needs, and getting additional technology into the hands of educators and students. That's my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Are there any other questions or comments on the Nishoba budget, line item 71? Yes, over here.
Hello, my name is Craig Skumpf. I live on 7 Zanderway in Stowe. So while you did a great job presenting the budget, you also represent the absolute biggest part of the budget. And so my comment would be, in the future, that we should not allow a presentation without the actual presentation.
Thank you. We will attempt to rectify that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, there is no one that's asked to hold any of the line items for individual debate other than for presentation. Thank you, Bill. You can, you can say. So we can proceed to a vote on the motion under Article 5. Again, yes, if you could come to the microphone.
Warner, it's 14 Bradley Lane, Stowe. What was the amount that was set to vote on?
That was $23,705,158.
I thought it was 23,721 said to begin with. No, okay, thank you.
Yes, over here.
Margie Lynch, Boxborough Road. I was wondering, since we heard the per pupil cost for Minuteman, could we hear an equivalent at Nishoba?
Yes. Mr. Cleary, do you have that number handy?
I apologize. What was the?
The question is, is do we have a per pupil cost for Nishoba Regional?
I apologize, but I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I could get it for you.
Do you have an approximately, how many, how many students?
We have 3,005, about approximately 3,500 students. So if you'd like, you can do the math on 50 million.
Sure. Oh, if you have a calculator, I have one right here, too.
Do you have it?
Is that 14,285 that I heard? $14,285. Does that answer the question? Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote. Again, the motion is to raise and appropriate, that's tax ourselves, $23,705,158. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see a scattering opposed, but I will call that clearly a majority, so the motion under Article 5 passes. Next, if we could bring up the consent calendar slide. So we have a process, well, I'll ask, how many, how many people? This is one of your first-town meetings, or your first-town meeting in Stowe. Okay, we have a process where we take a number of the articles that are, that are typical annual articles that we have to do as individual articles, and we group them together as, as one vote. But we do go through all of the articles first and ask, would anyone like to hold this for an individual motion and individual debate? The pro, the full process is described as it says on the slide on page 60, if you'd like to read in your warrant, and the motions that, that would be covered are on pages 61 to 6, I'm sorry, 61 to 66. So first, we will take a motion, if we could. That would be Mr. Burnclough.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the annual town meeting take action on Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33. As said, motions are printed in the consent calendar, a copy of which has been provided to the voters at this meeting without debate on any articles, and provided that upon the request of any voter at this meeting made before the vote is taken on this motion, an article shall be dropped from the consent calendar and shall be acted upon in the ordinary course of, and order of business at this town meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or other debate on the motion? So we're not actually voting on any articles, we're just voting on, on the consent calendar process. Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor of the motion. So now I'll go through the, the articles. Article 6 on page 28, I don't have it in front of me. Article 7 on, actually before, I'm sorry, before I start, there are four articles that did not get a finance committee recommendation in the warrant, so I'm going to ask the finance committee to tell us. Articles 10, 25, 26, and 33 are the ones by my count. Do we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
We do recommend approval of those, and we are also noticing that some of these others are out of order, so we may have to pay attention as we go through.
Okay, just let me know when you'd like to make a, a note. So on page 28, Article 6, on, let me get, let me get the right page myself. On Article 7, audit of financial records. Article 8, revolving fund for inspection fees. And again, if you wish to hold this for debate, just call out "hold." You don't need to go to a microphone. Article 9, revolving fund for advanced life support services. Article 10, transfer to conservation fund for land maintenance.
I'd like to call a hold.
That's a hold on Article 10? On page 30, Article 11, transfer from wetlands protection fund. I'm sorry, did I hear a hold? Okay, I heard a hold on Article 11. Article 12, addition to the conservation fund.
Hold, that was my, my.
I'm sorry, I can't hear unless you.
12, not 10.
12, not 10, okay. Thank you. 11 and 12 are being held. Article 13, update of property valuations. Article 14, town record binding and repair. Article 15, highway, road machinery in private ways. Article 16, highway road construction. Article 17, household hazardous waste collection. Article 18, public health nurse. Article 19, municipal solid waste disposal. Article 20, medical reserve core expenses. Article 21, construction and maintenance of water holes for firefighting operations. Article 22, Stowe Cultural Council. Article 23, employee educational incentive program. Article 24, town legal services. Article 25, selectmen's account for minor purchases. I'm going to hold that myself, simply because if you read the, the consent calendar, the way the consent calendar works, this is not an appropriate article for the consent calendar. It's a new article for the town. Article 26, water systems expenses. Article 27, switch, swift reach 911 notification. Article 28, Lake Boone water quality remediation. Article 29, veterans' benefits. Article 30, planning board engineering and consulting and master plan expenses. Article 31, community preservation expenses. Article 32, community preservation reserves. And Article 33, community preservation adjustment for fiscal year 2014 reserves. So again, we have Articles 11, 12, and 25 being held. Did we miss, did I miss any?
11, 15.
Did I hear 15? I, I, I'm sorry, was, was 15, okay. So 11, 12, 15, and 25. So did we have the, the motion on a slide, Mike, that we can show? Pardon? You kicked those out? Yes. Yeah, I wanted to show it with the, the ones taken out, if we could. So while we're waiting, I guess Mr. Burnclough will have four more. This is, this is his last, his last town meeting as a selectman, so we're, we're piling on the motions that he gets to read.
So I have to read this again?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, good.
Unless, unless there's anyone that's confused and would like it read again, but you will be reading the, the other four. So are there any questions on this? We are voting on the motions under those articles as printed in the warrant. Seeing no questions, this vote requires a majority vote. All of these articles are majority vote, articles, or all the motions under the articles are majority vote. So all in favor of these consent calendar articles, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor of the motions under the articles as printed So then we'll proceed to Article 10, transfer to conservation fund for land maintenance.
11.
I'm sorry. Pardon?
11.
Oh, I, I wrote that wrong, down wrong. Oh, I, I wrote that wrong, down wrong, sorry. Transfer from wetlands protection fund. Mr. Burnclo, you own the consent calendar.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate and transfer from the wetlands protection fund the sum of four mil, to four thousand, whoo, five hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents as an additional appropriation to the Conservation Commission to be expended by the Conservation Commission in performing its duties under the Wetlands Protection Act.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Michaud, I live at five-seventy Great Road, and I'm a pretty new resident to Stowe, and I don't have any objection to this article, I just was interested in hearing a little bit more about what the Conservation Commission will be spending it on, and whether we're funding them adequately. Thank you.
Do we have a member from the Conservation Commission that can speak to that? If not, uh, uh, thank you. Our, our Conservation Commission administrator, Kathy Sfera.
Kathy Sfera, seventy-four, West Acton Road. So this article transfers the town's share of the state Wetland Protection Act fee money that comes in from applications that we received last year. That money comes in, it's held in an account, and then has to be transferred back to the Conservation Commission before it's available for expenditure. We have no plans at the present moment to spend this money, so it, it goes into a wetlands protection fee account, and is available for us to spend to administer the Wetlands Protection Act. So if we have to hire consultants, or what have you, that money is available for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? Oh, Finance Committee's recommendation, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. There's no direct tax implications.
Thank you. Any further debate under Article Eleven? Seeing none, a vote for this is a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor of the motion under Article Eleven. Article Twelve, addition to conservation fund. Mr. Burnclo.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to be added to the balance remaining in the conservation fund.
We have a motion and a second. Yes, ma'am, over here.
I also, I guess I just, this is Kathy King, Farm Road in Stowe. So my question is, what is this ten thousand dollars being used for? Because if we have conservation land maintenance already, and the wetlands already, what's the ten thousand for?
Mrs. Sfera, could you enlighten us?
Kathy Sfera, seventy-four, West Acton Road again. So the funds that are in Article Ten, I know that wasn't questioned, but that's a small amount of money that comes in from the garden plot fees and the community gardens, and some of our agricultural licenses that we have in town. That money goes into the conservation fund and is then used back for the care of conservation land. That's a small amount of money, it's not enough to take care of the conservation land that we have. So every year, the town appropriates a, a sum of money, usually between five and ten thousand dollars, into the conservation fund. That is used to pay for our land steward, it's used for plowing and harrowing at the community gardens, trail markers, boundary markers, repairs to bridges, fences, essentially all of the work that we do on the town's conservation land.
And can you tell me what the balance is in our current conservation fund?
If you give me a minute, I can look it up, or Mr. Wrigley knows.
Pardon my job. Fifty-three thousand, five seventy-nine. As of the end of March.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to ask the Finance Committee for a recommendation.
Finance Committee also recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further debate under this article?
Yes.
I, I use the word "debate" in a technical sense, it means any comments, questions, or, or other, or amendments under the, the top motion. Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimous for the motion under Article Twelve. In favor of the motion, I should say, under Article Twelve. Article Fifteen, I believe, was the next one held. Highway, road, and machinery in private ways.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sums of money for highway department purposes as set forth in the schedule below. For the road machinery account, forty-three thousand, seventy-two dollars. For repairs on private ways, fifteen thousand dollars.
Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee? I'm sorry, second, thank you. Ready for me? Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of these routine annual appropriations to maintain road machinery and repair private road, private ways.
Thank you.
Hi, Karis Gomp, Xanderway. I live on a private road that has absolutely no maintenance from the town, so I'm just wondering what private roads in town are being maintained, because mine is not.
Is Mike Clayton here? Yes, thank you. Mike Clayton is our highway superintendent.
Hi, Michael Clayton. There are a handful of roads in town that are considered private roads that are not maintained by the highway department. I don't have the list in front of me, but Xanderway is one of them. And the fifteen thousand that we do have is used for all the others. There's about, around seven miles of private ways in town right now that we do maintain.
So who, who determines what private ways are maintained?
That's determined by the planning board, I believe, in, in the whole road building process, as far as I know.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on the motion under Article Fifteen? Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote. This again requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? I see a scattering, so I will call that clearly a majority in favor, but not unanimous. So the, the motion under Article Fifteen passes. And then Article Twenty-Five, I held that. The reason I held that was, well, could we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars to be added to any balance remaining from any previous appropriation, to be expended by the selectman or town administrator for the purpose of funding minor miscellaneous professional services, or for the purchase of small equipment and other goods.
We have a motion and a second. We have a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee approves this article, or recommends approval for this article.
Thank you. And I believe Mr. Wrigley is anticipating my question. What is this?
I didn't, I didn't volunteer for this, but this, this is not a new article. Essentially, this is a rewrite, and I'm the author of the rewrite, of a recurring article with a carryover balance that's been around for probably ten or fifteen years. It had been broadly, but vaguely, named several things, it's changed over time, and I just wanted to more accurately depict what that account has been used for by the board. So I changed the name and added some language with specificity that would make it clearer what it was for.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it was, before that, it was another name, but-
All right, I think you answered my question. Is there any other questions or comments from the floor? Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote on the motion under Article Twenty-Five. This again requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor, and the motion passes. And I believe that's the end of the consent calendar. We are now ready for a motion related to Article Thirty-four. Yes, Mr. Salvi, I believe.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town discuss the items of this article individually and vote upon each separately as to amount appropriated for each item as set forth in separate motions proposed.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any debate? All that, all that this does is each of the fourteen capital items will be treated as a separate motion and a separate vote. Seeing no debate, this requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed, please raise your cards. I will call it unanimously in favor of the motion, so the motion passes. We have a presentation from the Capital Planning Committee, and at the same time, I am going to temporarily step down, and the deputy moderator, Laura Spear, will moderate the meeting for the next several capital articles.
I needed something else. I could highlight it for me. Ready? Okay. Good evening, Madam Moderator. Good evening, neighbors. I'm Steve Joleneck, and I have the honor of serving as chair of the Capital Planning Committee, and I'm pleased to come before you tonight to present a general overview of what our committee does and its activities leading up to this town meeting. In a few minutes, you'll be hearing from, from me and other members of the committee about our specific recommendations about each of the capital articles that are in the warrant this year. Members of our Capital Planning Committee are mostly sitting over here in this corner of the room, and they're listed on this slide, and I'd like to thank them all for the, the hard work that they do on behalf of the town. This has been a particularly challenging year for capital planning. I say that, I think, every year, but as, as always, this committee has worked diligently, thoroughly, and respectfully to get us to this point. And so, Mike, can I have the, the next slide, please? I'm sure most of you know that the committee's mission is to help the town make wise capital investments. Capital planning is charged with considering and making recommendations to the town about capital projects. Specifically, we're charged with developing a five-year capital outlay program for the town so that you, the voters, can make informed choices about where you want to spend your money in the next year or in the next few years. A capital expense is defined in the town bylaws as any land acquisition, or an expenditure by the town of ten thousand dollars or more that has a useful life of three or more years. The annual process for us as a committee starts in December, as the departments begin to submit their budget requests. We then meet with every department that asks, that has money that they'd like to spend in the next year or the next few years. We ask them a series of critical questions, we work to understand why these requests are being made, and how the amount that they're asking for was established. And then we also ask about the department's priorities, review each department's five-year plan, and evaluate special purchase articles. Generally, what we're trying to do is take a look at the overall picture of the town's capital requirements and make recommendations about each individual request. This first or second slide compares the requested amounts for this year, FY fifteen, to what I presented at last spring's town meeting. As I said then, the first column is what we had for stuff last year, the second column is what's in the warrant, and the third column is what we, as a committee, are recommending. And as I said to you, at that time, things changed. Some of the department's requests are higher than they projected they would be, and some were less. This year, it turns out that most of the requests that we got were lower than what they projected they would have been at this time last year. Overall, this amounts to about three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars less than was projected last year. And this is maybe the first, and probably the only time since I've been chair of this committee, that I've been able to stand here and say something like this, but this year capital is recommending that you not support a couple of the elements, a couple of the articles, elements of Article Thirty-four, and we'll have more to say about that as each article is moved. Next. This is the five-year capital outlay program for each department as we know it. It's based on what the departments have told us that they expect to request in the next five years. Now, we understand the plans change from year to ne, one year to the next, and so what's shown here may very likely change. So in FY fifteen, the request is for just under seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. FY sixteen is about an average request for us. FY seventeen is shaping up to be another interesting and challenging year. And what I will say is that none of these include the costs associated with the fire station, the community center, or the library. Some of the bigger ticket items that we see on the horizon here, the cemetery department is looking in FY seventeen to replace its garage on Crescent Street. The fire department and the highway department each have plans to either refurbish or replace vehicles in each of the next four years. The school district was not able to estimate beyond FY seventeen, but historically, they've got capital requests in every year, so I wouldn't expect to see zeros in FY eighteen or nineteen when we get around to that. We also have, the planning board has a project that they'd like to get funded involving traffic and, and stuff in Gleesendale. We've got some roof repairs at Hale School that are coming up, and some other larger projects that we know about, and obviously, we will be looking at each of these requests very closely and carefully as they come up. And lastly, what we have here is a ten-year snapshot of what, what we've had for capital requests in the past, right now, and on into the future. The blue stuff, the blue bars here are the ones that, the total capital expenditures have been authorized by town meeting, not counting special articles like land purchases for the school project, but this, this is what's, what you, the voters, have approved over the last five years, and the average of these five years is five-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars. So this year, seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand is higher than average. Remember that in FY twelve, we had, which, you know, which is another seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar number, or actually, seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. That was, that included two-hundred-thousand dollars for the initial building project The green bars are, again, what we expect to see in the future based on what we've been told at this point. And I don't know that there's a trend there. I can't really tell you that there's a particular trend there, but on average, we see about a five-hundred to five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of capital requests every year, so. Mr. Moderator, I, I believe that concludes our presentation, unless there's any specific questions about the process or-
Thank you. You can hear me okay? All right, I'll hear a motion for Article Thirty-four dash one, please. Mr. Curran.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars for painting and repair to the old highway barn.
I'll first hear from the Capital Planning Committee, as this is a capital planning article.
Yes, capital planning recommends approval of this, of the highway barn painting and repairs, it's in disrepair in the, and we, we're, the, okay, we, we're looking to approve this, okay.
Do I hear a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee approved, recommends approval of this article.
Any debate or discussion? Seeing none, we will go to the vote. It is for forty thousand dollars for the old highway barn painting and repairs. This requires a majority to pass. All those in favor? All those opposed? I see one or two, I will declare that unanimous. Article Thirty-four, two.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars for the second part of the replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire and rescue department.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I have a comment from the Capital Planning Committee?
Yes, capital planning recommends approval of this.
Comment from the Finance Committee, please.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. It represents part two of a replacement to begin last year.
Thank you. Any- Thank you. Any, no? Looks like we have no debate on this. So, in summary, this is $64,273 for a self-contained breathing apparatus. All those in favor? I declare that unanimously passed. Thank you. Article 34-3, please.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for the second part of the Fire Rescue Department radio system upgrade.
It's been moved and seconded. Capital Planning, please.
Yes, capital planning recommends approval of this article.
And the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee accepts, in favor of acceptance of this article as well.
Any debate? Seeing none, this is for a radio system upgrade, $50,000. All those in favor? All those opposed? I will declare that unanimous. Article 34-4.
Madam Moderator, I move no action on Article 34-4.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there a reason why there's no action recommended? Should I go to Capital Planning?
He can, he can do it. You want to do it?
Mr. Wrigley.
I won't impose, but we had hoped by this time at town meeting that a local developer would be at the point with the planning board in developing property on Adams Road, which is, was, the Aspet Water Company. They went bankrupt, bought the property at auction, federal bankruptcy. And on that property is a water storage tank in very good condition. A fair sum of money had been spent by Aspet Water Company, in part from a loan the state provided them, together with a fair water treatment facility that are now of no use to anyone. Waited for the bankruptcy process to culminate with the sale to a local developer. Discussed with him the prospects of the town taking control, care-casting control of that water tank to use as a water hole. As you know, we have to truck our water to a fire scene or use a local water source. So it's, it would be rather handy for us. Was going to gift it to us to use, but is unable to get, to his satisfaction, the number of buildable lots that he wanted. So we're going to take no action at this point because there's no water tank available to us to improve. Essentially, it was an impertinence that we'd put to it as we draw water down, would consist of a simple hydrant, pressure it up, put our tankers there and go. I am hopeful that the planning board and the developer, as they continue to discuss his project, might make available to the town, perhaps at a fall town meeting, another offer, not quite as advantageous, which was zero, other than the upgrade to the tank. So no action at this time, but perhaps in the fall.
Thank you. Any comment from the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 34, number four, the purpose of repurposing the tank for the Aspet Water Company, which will provide the Fire Department with a significant water source in the Harvard Acres area and across from my house.
All right. The motion is to move no action on Article 34-4. Is there any debate? All those in favor? All those opposed? I declare that unanimous. Thank you. Article 34-5. Mr. Salvi.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $150,000 for a new six-wheeled dump truck for the Highway Department.
Do I hear a second? Capital Planning, please.
Capital Planning unanimously approves the Highway Department's request for the six-ton dump truck.
Thank you. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval of this also.
Is there any public comment or debate? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? I declare that unanimous. Article 35-6. I'm missing a page. 34-6. There we go. Mr. Kern.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the third part of repurposing a modular classroom for use as office space by the Highway Department.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I hear comments from Capital Planning?
Capital Planning approves this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee, please.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article also.
All right. Any public comments or debate? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? I will declare that unanimous. Thank you. Article 34-7. Mr. Ryan.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 for consulting fees for the Gleesendale Traffic Safety and Design Plans.
It's been moved and seconded. Capital Planning, please.
Madam Moderator, Capital Planning voted 4 to 1 to recommend the town not support this article. While we're very sensitive to the concerns raised by the residents of Gleesendale and others about the traffic and safety conditions that exist in this part of town, we're also concerned about the total amount of all the capital articles this year, the amount of this request, and we don't see an urgent need for the town to take on this project in the coming year.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee is in favor of acceptance of Article 30, this article.
Thank you, and it's my understanding the Board of Selectmen took a vote on this tonight.
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted this evening unanimously to support this article. There's been a lot of work done in Gleesendale to involve the residents there in trying to turn what is kind of a historic district, but that is well-hidden, nobody knows, is there. We have had resources of the University of Massachusetts provided at very low cost to us, some expert planning services and recommendations. I think that with the Board, in consultation with our planning director, Karen Kelleher, believes that this is the time to go ahead and to try to maintain some momentum in the planning. We have a lot of people that came out to meetings Saturday after Saturday after Saturday from that community, and they are very anxious to see particularly the mill. This wouldn't directly impact the mill, but it would prepare the way for something that we believe can be an innovative and resourceful use of that, that mill facility, and really give us some room for some more economic improvement in that part of the plan. And this has been a part of our master plan for some time. So we urge, the Board of Selectmen urge, your adoption of this article.
Thank you. I understand that Jesse Steadman, the Assistant Town Planner, will be giving a presentation.
Chair of Selectmen, I think, said it about as clearly and concisely as I possibly could, so I'm going to make this quick and brief. I just wanted to reiterate the process that we have gone through regarding the Gleesendale, year-long Gleesendale Village traffic, I'm sorry, revitalization planning process. We're currently in Phase III of the process, working with the UMass students. We have had an incredible turnout from folks, not only from Gleesendale, but all over town. A number of focus group sessions. We've had two workshop, or charrettes, as they've been called. We had a ground truthing event where different experts who've worked with mill revitalization and neighborhood revitalization came in and talked with a bunch of residents and with members of the planning board, and we're very excited about the potential down in Gleesendale Village. So we really have been able to see this kind of vision evolve over the last year, and it's been definitely an exciting thing to be taking part in. You can go to the next slide. There's no question that there are safety issues down there in Gleesendale along Route 62. For the folks living down there, the thing that we heard more and more and more of was that we have to do something about the traffic scenario, and it wasn't just speed, the layout of the street, the way everything is, has been built upon there. For many years, we've seen historic photos now, and it's interesting to see how the road has maintained. It's that narrow character. We've looked at the crash data from the police. We have the, we have the evidence that there are issues out there. Some traffic consultants have just weighed in briefly, and they almost could describe the condition of the roadway, just hearing about where the crashes were taking place. We know from what residents have told us that you have to scramble out of your vehicle and to get your groceries in the door. We can see their cars as you're driving down there, right on the side of the road. And we know that this kind of streetscape down there is really the biggest inhibitor of the kinds of reinvestment that we want to see in that village, and not just economic reinvestment, but just investment in neighborhoods in general. So the whole purpose of this capital request for $50,000 is to start the process, to get on that path towards fixing the safety issues, which are paramount in the area, but also kind of creating this environment for more reinvestment in that neighborhood. And really, what the $50,000 would allow us to do is to get a survey plan. One thing the students have done is shown us some great renderings based on what people have been dreaming up and thinking about what this village could be. There is no way that we can get from that point, from the, from where we are now, to some of these ideas without this basic survey plan, which shows us how wide these roads really are, what the kind of, what the rights of way look like, all the little things that we need to do to be able to build on and make some of these things a reality. It all starts with this kind of survey plan. It's very similar to the survey plan that we used in Lower Village to be able to kind of, use that to leverage getting towards our final design and construction plans that we're currently doing right now. So it's really just the first step, the first step. We can get in and figure out what, out of all of the ideas that have been brought forth in the planning project, what kinds of traffic calming measures are actually feasible, what is a reality, what is something that we should probably stop looking at. So it really gives us an idea of what's the real possibility down in Gleesendale. And I think more than anything, it's really a show of support from the town, a show of public investment in an area that we know has a lot of potential. It's clearly a major asset for the town, and the safety aspects seem to have been not long overlooked, just something that hasn't yet been able to deal with, been, that we've been able to deal with. So this is the first step in getting there, and that really is it.
Thank you. Is there any public comment or debate?
Hi, Alan Fierce from Reddick Road. I'm not from the Gleesendale area, but I've been to all the charrettes and planning meetings on this, raising a couple of issues, and one of them had to do with, in connection with the traffic down in Gleesendale, it had to do with bicycle safety. This is an area that's a real bottleneck and not a safe place for road bikers like I am. We tend to avoid that area like the plague. It's not safe. This route, however, is very likely to be, for at least the near term, the route that bicycle riders are going to be taking is they connect up from the Hudson Bike Trail, which ends just down the road from Gleesendale, and the bike trail that we're going to have going along Track Road. Bicycle riders who want to connect those two are going to come right through Gleesendale and turn on Sudbury Road. So I support this Warren article. I just want to hear from the planner before us that this traffic study is going to include bicycle safety as well as traffic safety.
Mr. Steadman.
Yeah, I think to be more specific, this is not necessarily an ask for creating a conceptual plan right now for the Gleesendale area. What we want to know is if some of those ideas, such as bicycle safety and the kinds of road widths and the different things that you need to be able to build on those kinds of things, if those are possible right now. Without that survey plan, it's tough to say whether or not these are just things that people are dreaming about, or whether these are things that we can actually make happen. And once you have the survey plan in place, then we can really start to figure out where are the best locations for things like bike amenities, or where are the best locations for potential sidewalks? And right now, we simply haven't done the homework to know that. We, we know what we've heard from the residents, and the next step is, is being able to get a survey, a base plan down there, to figure out what it is we're dealing with so we can get towards those.
Thank you. Is there any other debate or discussion? All right, the motion is for $50,000 for consulting for a Gleesendale Traffic Safety Design Plan. All those in favor? All those opposed? I will not declare it unanimous, but the motion passes. Article 34-8. Mr. Cox.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $38,000 for a new patrol vehicle for the Police Department.
Capital Planning.
Capital Planning supports this article. This is consistent with the Police Department's plan to replace one vehicle per year.
And Finance Committee, please.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee is in favor of acceptance of this article.
Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none, this is for $38,000 for a new police patrol vehicle. All in favor? All opposed? I will declare that unanimous. Article 34-9. Mr. Burnclos.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $150,000 for replacement of the police station HVAC system.
Capital Planning, please.
Capital Planning supports this article. Heating system or cooling system in the police station has been a problem for many years. It's been too hot in some rooms, no cooling in others, and because of the lack of cooling, there's issues of mold buildup. So we've had this looked at by some experts, and we think this is now a reasonable plan that we should move ahead with.
Thank you. Finance Committee, please.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee is also in favor of acceptance of this article.
Thank you. Any public discussion or debate?
Craig Scump, Xander Weggen. So I'm just curious, there's still police building, it's a fairly new building, so how, what is the actual age of the system that it's replacing?
Do we have Chief Bosworth?
Oh, she got the building inspector.
Oh, the building inspector, even better. Mr. Martin, please.
Craig Martin, Two Martin Lane, Building Inspector. The building was built in 1996, and primarily, the system, heating system and cooling system in the building right now is not meeting the needs of the staff. It's almost like working in a wind tunnel. The system is overdesigned, and we really want to bring it into what we have available now in the modern day, which is more efficient gas fixtures and available rebates from N-Star, so we think we can save money here and put a new system in.
Okay, yeah, so my, my comment really was around, you know, it seems like a fairly young system and, you know, where we sold a lemon or something to that effect.
Mr. Martin, can you comment?
There, there was, I did a little research in terms of how the system was designed originally, and I'm not saying who was at fault or what happened at the time. It may have been a cost-cutting measure, but there were two systems that were designed for the system originally, a hot air system and a hydro system for hot water, baseboard heating. Somewhere along the line, the baseboard heating was deleted from the contract, and it was built with an oversized hot air distribution system. And I, I think that's the problem we have now. It's an oversized system, not adequate, really not adequate for moving, it's moving too much air through the building. That's the summary.
Thank you. Any other public comment or debate?
Detective Christopher Arro, Hudson Road.
I have a question, Madam Moderator, if there's a possibility that the HVAC- If there's a possibility that the HVAC could have part of it be a geothermal system, it's just a yes or no question and anything else that's added is just information for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to defer to our building inspector again.
I won't commit to that, but it's a possibility. It's not a very large site. Whether or not the conditions would be appropriate for that, I can't say. We have thermal systems in the town. It might be possible to do it here.
Thank you.
But it's a completely, I can say that I will look into it.
Thank you. Any other debate? Seeing none, the motion is for $150,000 for the replacement of the police station HVAC system. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's not unanimous, but it clearly passes. Thank you.
Thank you. While I'm hooking myself back up, do we have a motion under Article 34-10? Mr. Salvi.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $65,000 for resurfacing the Hartley Road Hale School parking lot.
We have a motion and a second. Capital Planning.
Mr. Moderator, as Mr. Salvi said, these funds would be used to repair and resurface Hartley Road and the Hale School parking lot in the front. This is a scaled-down version of the project that the town voted down last year and Capital Planning recommends the town support it.
Thank you. Finance Committee, do we have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. As Steve said, it was asked for $90,000 last year and coming back for 65 this year.
Thank you. Is there any debate on the motion under Article 34-11? Seeing none, we can go to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see a scattering opposed, but I will call it clearly a majority in favor, so the motion passes. Article 34-12, Hale School Elevator. Oh, did I miss? I'm sorry. 34-11, Hale School Roof Repairs. My apologies.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,500 for roof repairs at Hale School.
Thank you. Capital Planning.
Capital Planning recommends the town support this article, which would fund repairs to a small portion of the roof over this building. I believe it's the administrative office building area which is getting water on them.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Do we have any debate for the motion under 34-11, Hale School Roof Repairs? Seeing none, this is a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor of the motion, so the motion passes. Now, Article 34-12.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to upgrade the elevator control system at the Hale School.
Do we have a second? Did I hear one? Oh, thank you. Capital Planning.
I should just stand up here. As Tom mentioned, the funds here would be used to replace the control system of the elevator. There's been a number of problems with the elevator over the last couple of years and this is the school's district's least-cost solution to these problems and so the Capital Planning recommends the town support it.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as well. The current Hale School elevator must remain operational.
Thank you. Is there any debate questions?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Debbie Woods, 453 Great Road. It's more of a comment versus a question. I continually be frustrated by, in particular, the school district. We allocate a lot of money for maintenance of schools and I know it's a magic number of, I think it's $10,000. Anything over $10,000 is considered a capital request or a capital expense. Again, I'm continually frustrated, the dollar amount always seems to be just a little bit over $10,000, so that's a capital expense and not part of maintenance.
Any other questions or debate? Seeing none, we can go to a vote. All in favor of 34-12, please raise your cards. All opposed? I see a scattering opposed, but I will call it a majority in favor and the motion passes. 34-13, Hale School Window Frames.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $24,000 for the second phase of repairs to windows, window frames at Hale School.
Thank you. Capital Planning.
Mr. Moderator, this is the second phase of a three-year program to make building envelope improvements at Hale School, specifically to seal up where the walls and the window frames meet. Capital Planning recommends we support this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Eckel.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as well.
Thank you. Is there any debate, any questions or comments? Seeing none, this is again a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see a couple opposed, but I will call that a majority in favor and the motion passes. 34-14, Hale School Underground Storage Tank. Mr. Burnclow.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 34-14.
Capital Planning.
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning is very much in favor of moving no action on Article 34-14.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee is in favor of no action on 34-14.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak to why no action?
Yes. Why no action? [laughter]
Vilenek.
Want me to go?
Go ahead.
So, there's a long story that goes behind this, so I'll give you the short version of it. 1994, when we rebuilt this portion of Hale School, we installed a new underground, state-of-the-art oil storage tank because the boilers that feed this building, heat this building, can burn either natural gas or fuel oil. For many years, we burned fuel oil exclusively because it was cheaper than natural gas. In recent years, we've been burning natural gas instead of fuel oil. There is a rule in the Massachusetts Fire, I forget exactly what portion of the regulation it is, Chief, so you'll have to help me out if somebody really wants to know, but there's a rule that says that underground oil storage tanks cannot be abandoned. And so, since the town, or since the district has not been using oil, there's some question as to whether or not the tank has actually been abandoned or not. Capital Planning has debated this for two years now and from our perspective, it makes sense to keep the tank in the ground. It's not showing us that there's any indication that it's leaking. It's a double-walled fiberglass, state-of-the-art tank with leak detection equipment in it. And there's some question as to whether or not we might need it again for either oil or for some other purpose at some future point. So, we don't see the need for there to be, the town to spend 25 grand to pull the tank out of the ground at this point. Did I cover all those points, Chief, or did you have anything else you wanted to add?
If you have a question, could you please come to one of the speakers? I couldn't hear. Yes, over here.
Steve Dungan, 89, West Akron Road. A quick question. I assume the tank has been thoroughly pumped, correct?
I can't speak to that.
Does anyone know the answer to that question? Has the tank been pumped? Bill? Yes.
Thank you. No, currently there's approximately 2,000 gallons of fuel oil in the tank.
Thank you. Over here.
Yeah, Alan Fierce, Red Acre Road. I spent the last 16 years of my career working with the state's hazardous waste site cleanup program and I've dealt with hundreds of tanks that have leaked, that no one thought were going to leak, that ended up costing the parties involved far more than it would have ever cost them to either remove the tank. Or there is a second option, which is to fill the tank essentially in place. Those are the two options. I actually think you're looking at a situation where you have probably violated the state regulations by not doing one of those two if it has been unused for this long and still has oil in it. I would strongly recommend doing one of those options, closing it in place or removing this tank if there's no indication in the foreseeable future that we're going to be using that. This is a situation where you could be looking at a bill of, I don't know, $150,000, $200,000. And remember, this is a community that gets all of its drinking water from the ground. This is not the kind of thing we ought to be playing around with in stow. So, I would seriously recommend voting against the motion for no action.
Thank you. Over here.
Mr. Moderator, the tank is equipped with leak detection. There is no indication that there is a leak. It's a 15-year-old, double-walled fiberglass tank. We don't expect that there's any immediate need to remediate any oil spill from the tank.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
William Byron, Gleesondale Road. Over the last two years of going to Capital Planning, first heard about this tank in the ground and oil in it that's several years old now. And I don't know if fuel oil goes bad or sour, but if we're not using it, if we decided for some reason to fire it back up under oil, would this fuel just clog the whole system up? And I've suggested at these meetings that I, in my opinion, why not pump that oil out of there and put it to use, even if it was just to be used in the heating, the town barn facility, which uses waste oil to heat.
Thank you. Yes.
Bill Booth, Evelyn Road. I've got a couple of questions. One, is there, it seems to me it was a wise decision to make, provide the option for oil or gas and who knows where the prices of either of those are going to go in the future. So, to lose that option, it seems to me is not a desirable thing. Is there any reason why we could not put oil in that tank and burn it periodically, once a year, once every two years, so that we meet the letter of the law about it not being unused, but still use the bulk of our, do the bulk of our heating with the most economical fuel?
Okay. Mr. Cleary, could you answer that?
The way the system was designed in order to change over from oil to gas, it's not as simple as flipping a switch. We actually have to remove on the boilers, the burner system and replace the nozzles in it and then readjust the burners for use on oil. It is a substantial process that really you would do once at the year and then burn oil for the year. So, that's why we haven't moved forward as far as switching oil to gas.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments or other debate? Seeing none, no action requires a majority vote. So, if you vote yes, you're voting to pass over this article. If you vote no, presumably you have someone that's willing to make a different motion under the article. So, all in favor of no action, please raise your cards. All opposed to no action, please raise your cards. I'm going to do that again. All in favor, I just wanted to check. All opposed? It's a substantial opposed, but I will call it clearly a majority in favor, so the motion for no action passes under Article 34-14. Article 35, Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $381,000 to be expended together with an appropriation and transfer of $300,000 in free cash for a total of $681,000, the purpose of which is to fully fund architectural and engineering services necessary for the project design and development and complete construction documents to make extensive building improvements and renovations at the Pompo City School in order to convert the school into a shared-use fire station and community center, including administrative expenses and other incidental costs related thereto. The total project cost is currently estimated at $9.4 million. However, it's acknowledged that this preliminary cost estimate is non-binding and subject to change as a result of the project details developed during the design phase and that an affirmative vote on this article shall be null and void and of no further force and effect unless the town approves by affirmative vote a ballot question to exempt the amount required to pay for the bonds to be issued hereunder from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2.
So, we have a motion and a second. We'll take a recommendation from the Selectmen while...
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to support this. Three of our members served on the building committees and were intimately involved with it, but ultimately had to come back and their recommendation was put to us as a board. And we think that this project has been clearly vetted when it came before town meeting before. There were a lot of unanswered questions on prioritization and I think that, and alternatives that have been amply explored. And I, for one, voted against the projects last time. I was from Missouri. I have been shown, I, as a member of this board, and we all urge you to support Article
So, we will do a handful of short presentations and then we'll take, well, we'll take the recommendation from Capital Planning, I guess, if you're ready.
Capital Planning spent a lot of time listening to the arguments, pro and con, about this, but the biggest argument pro for this thing was the fact that we're reusing an existing building that's in awfully good shape, the fact that we need a fire station and we did unanimously approve this article.
Thank you. And we'll take a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The various building committees and the building oversight committees conducted a thorough analysis of all the buildings involved, the shape, along with the town's needs. Pompo School, the current fire station, Randall Library was a big part of this as well. And the combined fire station, community center at Pompo is the least expensive option and by far the most efficient. And as mentioned, we are reusing a building that is currently empty as well.
So, now we'll have an overview of the project from Mr. Ryan.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. For those of you who don't know, I'm Tom Ryan. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, but I'm actually standing up here tonight as a member of the Building Oversight Committee, one of my other hats. And before I begin, one of the things I'd like to do is on behalf of myself and the rest of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to thank all of... rest of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to thank all of the people that have been involved in getting us to where we are today. This includes the building oversight, community center, library, fire building committee, the COA, fire department, recreation, building inspector, and numerous other folks, past and present, that have been involved in this process. Special thanks to our town administrator, Bill Wrigley, for keeping us all on track on this project. Back of the special town meeting we had in the fall of 2012, there were multiple projects and options that were proposed without priorities and at substantial cost to the town. The feedback that we received was that we needed to prioritize and see if we could reduce the costs. Over a year ago, the Board of Selectmen formed the Building Oversight Committee to look into ways to prioritize and reduce the costs of the projects that were presented in 2012. The Building Oversight Committee ended up coming up with Article 35, which is the culmination of our work, and it's the unanimous recommendation of the Oversight Committee and the Board of Selectmen. And as you heard, it's also been supported by Capital Planning and the Finance Committee. Next slide. Back, back one, please. Back one. Nope. All right. We're good here. What we're recommending tonight, as read in the motion, is $681,000 in funding for the design and development of a shared-use concept for the currently vacant Pomposi Tidus School for use as a fire station, community center, and rental space or future expansion for the town services. As mentioned in the article, it's, the estimated cost currently is at $9.4 million. We haven't forgotten about the library. There are still existing needs. However, given some of the repairs that we've been made, we feel that we can address the existing needs for now with additional short-term improvements and address the expansion and renovation in the future. This project has the overwhelming support of the Oversight Committee, Board of Selectmen, Capital Planning, Fire Station Building Committee, Community Center, and the Library Building Committees, and is the preferred option over Article 36. Should this, should Article 35, or should this Article 35 pass tonight, we would end up moving no action on Article 36, which is a standalone fire station. This Article 35 also corresponds to question one on the May 13 ballot. Next, please. Shortly, you're going to hear from a number of other folks about why you should support this project. You're going to hear from the fire department, the COA, rec, food pantry, and then Town Administrator Bill Wrigley will be talking about the financing and cost impacts. You'll also be hearing from the FinCom and Capital Planning, which you already did. So I guess you won't hear from them again. They, they kind of messed me up here. Next, please. First, we need to take you back to where we were in the fall of 2012 for the fire station and community center projects. Back then, new fire station, we were looking at 17,000 square feet for about 7.2 million. Minimal upgrades at Pompo for community center were going to be about 2.5 million. Total cost for the two standalone projects was about 9.7 million dollars. Next, please. The 2.5 million that we were looking at investing in the community center project was essentially to bring the building up to code and included very little in actual upgrades. The list of what it didn't include for the community center was actually longer than what it did include. Next, please. Then we ended up getting to 2013 as we got rolling along in the Oversight Committee. Turns out that the 17,000-square-foot fire station that we were looking at on Crescent Street back in 2012, we were now told it was going to cost us 9.6 million dollars. Essentially, we were given bad figures back in 2012. We validated the new numbers, and we were looking at an increase, not a decrease. Assuming the minimal upgrades at Pompo for community center, we were still, we're still at 2.5 million, we ended up with a new project cost total of about 12.1 million dollars. We didn't consider this to be an acceptable alternative. To drive the cost down, we ended up reducing the size of the fire station while keeping most of the programming in it. While the new cost estimates were smaller, we ended up getting down to about 7.5 million dollars for a new fire station with 12.5, 12.5,000 square feet. This was, this was supported by the Fire Station Building Committee, and there was potential on the 3 through 3 Great Road site, and there was potential for future expansion there. Next, please. With the fire station down to 12.5,000 square feet and the cost of 7.5, and still looking at Pompo with just minimal upgrades, we were still at 10 million dollars. It was better, but still not what we, it was still more than we had in 2012. Next. Then came the Pompo option we're considering, we're proposing tonight, the combined fire station, community center with rental and expansion space. Total estimated cost for 26,000 square feet of fully updated space were an estimated cost of 9.4 million. Yep, I know that slide says 9.5. I screwed up when I wrote it, but it was too late. Yep, it's 9.4. But now, wait, there's more to go along with this. For the 9.4 million estimated, we get more than the two standalone projects. We get 1,000 square feet more of space for the fire department, all on one floor, which is actually preferable. We get a full community center upgrade, not just a minimal upgrade. We end up getting windows, plumbing, electrical, outside work, the whole ball of wax. How do we get more for less? We use an existing perfectly good building rather than starting from scratch. Next. We also get foundational work so that we could rent out about 10,000 square feet of space, or we could easily upgrade, grade that space for a fire station, community center expansion 10 or 20 years down the road if we need it. We also utilize an otherwise empty building, which is in good shape. Next. So, in summary, for an estimated 9.4 million combined use at Pompo, we end up getting more space for the fire department, a full upgrade for the community center, and potential rental space or expansion space for the future than we would get in two standalone projects for 10 million. We believe that this is a good value for Stowe and hope you support this project. The other thing to remember tonight is, right now, you're just approving the design funds for $681,000 for this project. The actual building funds will be presented at a future town meeting. Next.
Thank you. Next, I believe we have the fire...
I just wanted to show what, what we're proposing there. All right. The light, light blue section on the left-hand side would be the fire station section. The yellow section is the community center. The small brown section in the center-right, which would be the food pantry. The gray top center section would end up being a rental expansion space, and there's a small light blue section next to the community center part. It's actually the building mechanical area. This is all preliminary at present and will be finalized using funds to be approved tonight and at the town election. And just a quick picture of the next one. I know some people have been concerned about a community center and a fire station. One thing you'll note is that there's a strict separation between the two driveways. The driveway for the fire station is on the left-hand side, and we put a new driveway for the community center on the right-hand side. Thanks for your time, and we hope you support this project by voting yes tonight and on question one at the town election. Next up is Fire Chief Joe Landry.
I should add, I was given a certain amount of time for these, and this one went quite a bit over, so folks are going to have to pick it up unless we want several other talks not to happen.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. I'm going to go a little bit quicker than him. Some of the stuff I might end up actually going through, by the way, my name is Joe Landry, I'm the fire chief, and this is our fire station committee. This has been something that's been going on, as you all know. You've been sitting through this for a few times now. I just wanted to make sure these people recognize there's been a lot of man-hours put into this project, so. Next slide. The key to us right here, then and now, where were we and where are we now? Back in 1966, you're just, these are some of the statistics that we have for our apparatus. Back in '66, we had no personnel in the station. It was mainly just a big garage, all volunteer force, and some impressive numbers. We had 30 calls for service that year, no inspections. Today's fire service, as of 2013 statistics, we're looking at a much larger apparatus, many more pieces of apparatus, just for the needs that we are meeting with our community. We have an ambulance service that came into effect in 1975 that was not part of the fire station when it was originally built. Forty-nine members total, and that is all combined with call per diem, which are the people that work the night shifts and full-time staff during the days. We are manned 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. You call, there's somebody in the building at the whole time. Last year, we did 897 calls for service and 318 inspections. So there's obviously a difference in our fire department since 1966, when the original building was built. These are my three main points that I'd really like to get out here to everybody. The reason why we're here, it's the multimillion-dollar question, I guess you could say. Truly, the top one is the most important. Currently, there's structural needs to the building. There's, facility has a number of structural and spatial deficiencies. Everybody runs out of space, but we're truly having some structural concerns with our building that just need to be addressed in the very near future. Along with the spatial concerns, reusing the building, it's very, it's a very poor choice through some of these concerns. I'd like to also just show a couple of quick slides of what the upgraded facility will do for the operation, the organization, and truly what you will gain from it. It's, it's a hard thing to understand, but our operation is a community operation, and we just want to try and give you the best service we possibly can. And that service is community approach and community outreach, and we need a facility that can do that. And I'd also just like to mention the spatial, the benefits of the shared use. One back from that. Structural deficiencies. These were the keys. In 2012, a study was done prior to my being part of the fire department in Stowe again, but these were some major concerns structurally with our building that's existing. The standards that, for roof loads, things of that nature, are just, the building is underbuilt for what we have for the vehicles. Spatial needs, structural distress, we're getting large cracks in the walls, settling in the floors, things that are just concerns with the vehicles. When I showed you the gallons of water, the reason that's there is each truck carries that much more water from 2,200 to 5,800 gallons. Those are structural needs that that floor was not designed to hold. So there's a number of deficiencies that are structural that are a major concern of ours for the future of this building. Go ahead. Here's just a couple of quick pictures before we move on, just some ideas. There's the type of apparatus that's pulling out of those bays today. The apparatus that was pulling out of it was anywhere from 1960 back to 1933 when this building was originally built. You could probably stand up in most of the vehicles back then and drive out and still not hit your head. We can't have snow on our apron without pulling the truck out. Next slide, please. Some of the things, these are some of the benefits of the new facility, especially for us, and I'll show some others, but current space is what you see is on your left and what today's standard is for a fire station. During the daily operation, these guys open cabinets, they pull equipment out, there's daily checks that they have to do. Right now, we pull vehicles in and out all day long just to do those checks, which heat in the wintertime, things of that nature, move an apparatus. You'll see those hoses in the middle, those big yellow hoses on the industry standard. Those are exhaust collection systems. We can't even put them in our station, there's not enough room for it. So these are just some small things that I just wanted to give you some idea of our facility compared to a standard. Next slide. These things that are on the left wall, this is the way our station is designed. We have no other space for any of our facilities. So we have our air breathing systems, our vehicle maintenance. All those things are done in-house, and those things are actually just stored along the walls. This picture to the right shows us what our new design would have as independent rooms for each of these type of things, mechanical things, hazardous materials, self-contained breathing apparatus. That picture to the left is actually our breathing air filling station, and it's probably about six inches from that yellow line where that second vehicle drives by. So these are, these are just some basic concepts of what we're dealing with today. Next slide. Just back a little bit, you'll notice the fire gear. It's sitting right out on the apparatus floor with the exhaust and the carcinogens going through them. When we come back from a fire now, we actually wash our fire gear. The old days of looking really dirty is gone. The way this standard is now, this gear should be in a separate room. The new design does have that facility in it. These are just situations, guys could be putting gear on and off right next to this piece of apparatus while it's moving on for a call, so we need to get this type of thing done off of the apparatus floor for safety concerns, along with, with concerns of health hazards. Next slide, please. We have multiple storage outside. Like I said, everybody has spatial needs, but we obviously, we even park apparatus outside, we have our boat outside. These pieces are kept out all year round. The engine's plugged in, and the water has to be drained out of it. It's a brush truck, so it's not a huge concern, but there are pieces of our apparatus that our new facility would have storage inside. Next slide. You'll see to the left, that is our second floor and the fire station that is combined, our training facility, our living quarters, our kitchen, our upstairs bathroom, and our bunk rooms for the night crews. Truly, what we're looking for is dedicated rooms for each of these functions, especially a training facility. Putting a training facility down at our ground level, putting it out there where we can invite the public, we want to become a community fire department, or we want to add to our community approach to the fire department over years, and we would like to bring that down to the public so that you can have access to it. Currently, we can't have programs in the station because it's in the second floor, and I think somebody's eating a sandwich in the back corner right there, so. Next slide. This is our office space. As I stated, we do 318 inspections, and that doesn't include planned review, things of that nature. Public walks in and out of the station all day long. These are our only two office spaces for our working outside of my office. The room to the right is the actual, that's the administrative assistance office. He works right in. The little door just behind him to the left, that's the only downstairs bathroom. He does sensitive paperwork for EMS, which health, health information. So normally, we have to close that room off during his working hours to any public or anybody that's coming in and out. So it just, this is just to give you an idea, that's truly all of our working space. The new facility would have planned review rooms, things of that nature, office space. Any disciplinary reaction truly gets done right out in the open. We have no other closed doors, so. Next slide. And the final part of this is shared use, the benefits of the shared use in the facility at Pompo, how it will meet us. It's been mentioned before, we feel like, one, you have a building, it's sitting here. We feel like it's a benefit to the town, and it's a benefit to our department, so we truly think that this will work for us. Next slide. And the other thing is our community outreach. By the shared benefit, shared use facility, we feel like we'd be able to reach the children through our, the community center programs, and here's some programs that are out in the United States from all over the place of senior safe and senior, senior services where we can do outreach programs, and we feel like having the shared facility will definitely benefit the programs. And that's about it. So thank you very much, and we're hoping for your support.
We have COA. So I will point out, there's not much time left for the total presentation.
Okay.
We'll ask town meeting if they wish to go further.
And I'm not good at fast. I'm kind of a talker, so I'll do my best. My name's Kristen Donovan, I'm Chair of the Council on Aging in Stowe. The Council on Aging is very happy to support Article 35 as it... The Council on Aging is very happy to support Article 35 as it addresses our space, space needs, and we thank the Oversight Committee for their consideration for our programming. The mission of the Council on Aging is to provide support to those aged 60 and over by being a resource of information on elder affairs, providing social activities, outreach services, and helping people remain in their homes as long and safely as possible. Slide, please. Slide. So, for the numbers, we have about 1,500 seniors in Stowe, give or take a few birthdays. We service directly 800 of those on average in a three-month period. We run about 40 programs a month. We have a staff of four people, one full-time director, two outreach people who are part-time, and a part-time social worker. We do all this with the support of the Friends of the Stowe Seniors, who collect money for us, and they fund our programs. And the most impressive number is the 200 volunteers that spend their time helping us run our programs. Slide, please. So, we do all of this in a 1,200-square-foot space called the Friendship Room, and 80% of what we do is social services. We are the intake for applications for SMOC, which is a fuel assistance program. We do food stamps, we have advocacy groups, support groups, and we have, right now, no spaces for confidential meeting. So, when we need to meet, we go into the custodian closet with a couple of chairs and meet among the toilet paper. So, we have much-needed, we need space for conference rooms and confidentiality. Slide, please. We also have health services. We do clinics, podiatry clinics. We run healthy lifestyle classes, we have exercise classes. All of our exercise classes are held right now in the churches. The churches have been very supportive of our programs, and a lot of times, we do get kicked out because rightly so, they need to use their spaces. But they do heat them, and they allow us to use their spaces, so we're very grateful to the churches for that. Slide, please. So, recreation, we do do fun things, too. We have dinners and parties and events. We have creativity classes and a world-class art program. And we have an art show coming up on the 18th, I hope you'll all stop by. And all of these recreational programs that we run, we do have to limit participation. So, we have 20 to 30 people are allowed to come, just because we can't fit them in our Friendship Room. Slide, please. Intergenerational programs, this was something that I was very proud to bring to the Council on Aging, as I have three kids of my own, I feel it's very important for our children in our town. We had the Friends of the Council on Aging have supported and purchased a Bridges Together program, which is running in the schools in the fourth grade now. And we have 40 senior volunteers who work with the kids, and they go in on a weekly basis, and they share their experiences and their common experiences. So, the curriculum, at the end of the year, the kids are supposed to come to the senior center to see where the seniors hang out. And unfortunately, we won't be able to do that because we can't even house the 40 seniors that we have that are volunteers, never mind the 125 students that we're working with. So, that's unfortunate. So, we would love to have space in the new Pompo building where we would be able to host the children. And, slide, please. So, in conclusion, it's simple, more space, more participants, more programs. I've had some people come to me and say, you know, I'm a senior and I don't use the senior services. And to those people, I do have to say that if you have your health and your hobbies, and you have your resources and your supports, and you have your friends and your family nearby, you're very fortunate. And if you don't, you have the Stowe COA. And so, we ask you to support us and vote yes on Article 35, and give us the space that the volunteers need and the staff need to run the great programs that make our COA so wonderful. Thank you.
Sorry, next, I believe we had the Recreation Director. I should point out, on the timer, we have seven minutes left.
I'll take one.
Great.
I'm very quick. My name is Laura Greeno, I'm the Recreation Director for the town of Stowe. I have a lot of the same issues as the COA, lack of space. Right now, we use the Old Town Hall mostly for all our programming. It's a very small space, it's a historical space, and so, it limits us on what we can actually do in the building, and it, and how many activities we can have. So, what would, so, the Community Center would benefit the town by giving us more space to do programming. Currently, we don't have much parking, so it will take care of that situation for us. We have no adult programs, other than fitness programs. So, we want to expand on our adult, adult education and our intergenerational programs. A teen center, there's teens all over the place, and this would be a great opportunity to have a place for them to come and have organized activities for them. We have limited spaces at the schools because they're, got their own programming going on, they do allow us to use it, but it's very limited. And currently, we have to, we have our summer camp, and we have to bus our kids out to Maynard when we have bad weather. And if we have the Community Center with a large activity room, we could stay in Stowe. I feel like this would benefit the entire community, and I hope you will support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And the Food Pantry wanted to say a few words, I believe they had a couple of slides.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Steve Duggan, I'm the Volunteer Coordinator at the Stowe Food Pantry. I want to begin by giving a quick shout-out on the second slide to our current host, which is the First Parish of Stowe. For many, many years, they have been so kind to us, giving us free rental, free utilities. Very grateful for their support. Problem is, we've run out of room to run the pantry efficiently. Next slide, please. These are some examples of the kind of extra space that we could really use. Because of time constraints, I will highlight one in particular, which is the space we need to store all of the client supplies in one location. You may know that the Food Pantry resides at the church, but there are two other offside locations as well. And we actually have runners who go from point A to point B to point C, shuffling cans of corn, diapers, and what have you, all across town. It's very inefficient. It also makes it very difficult to do inventory management. We go out to do our buying, we have to know what we have, we have to check all three locations to see what's cooking. It's a, it's a real problem for us. Next slide. So, the benefits of a few more square feet of space would be basically a much more efficient operation, faster service to the customers, easier inventory control. I also want to mention that we, we could operate the pantry on, on different times. Right now, we're basically at the beck and call of the church's schedule, after all it's their space. But if we had our own dedicated site at Pompo, we could do a lot more time-wise, and maybe expand the pantry to different people whose work hours are not compatible with our current hours. Finally, slide. So, as other speakers have said, Pompo, the Pompo plan, we think is terrific. We hope you all support it and help us move the pantry to Pompo. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And finally, Mr. Wrigley wanted to give an overview of the finances.
The primary focus for me as the Chief Fiscal Officer is to minimize the TAC impact for all of you. Our debt schedule, the choke points are in 2019, 2020, 2021. Started by reducing the upfront cost out of pocket by applying $300,000 of previously appropriated taxation called free cash. I've also promised that another $300,000 minimum I will find before we go from what's called ban, which are bond anticipation notes, temporary borrowing, to the permanent borrowing, 600,000. Hopefully, during that four-year ban, I can come up with more. The intent is to buy down the principal actually borrowed. Four-year ban allows us to slide into 2019, saving $200,000 of the, of the last principal pay-down before the permanent borrowing on our debt schedule. The next year in 2020, we unload $189,000 of debt called flag kill. And then, the big one in 2021, and 2020 is our first full load on this. In 2021, we unload the Hale School debt of $744,000 a year. The annual, average annual payment per household will be $220 a year. For this project, $9.4 million total, 8.8 bonded with the $600,000 down. $18.33 a month. Can you answer the rest during Q and A? But we've done all that can be done lawfully to reduce the tax payment. And that's what I plan to do.
Well, we're glad that you keep that all lawful, Mr. Wrigley. Do we have any questions or comments on Article 35? This is a large article, so we're expecting a certain amount. Yes, sir, over here.
Tom Shepherd, Harvard Road. Just one question, I'm in favor of the project, but just one question. Do we intend in these numbers to take down the old fire station, assuming this all goes forward?
Mr. Wrigley.
There are two practical future uses of that site. One is, there is a obvious need for parking in this, in the center of town. Clearly, with the potential expansion of the library, and they're choked for parking as it is. And the town hall parking is non-existent. Streetside, you have some, you come across the street. For us, dangerous pedestrian crossing, as we all know. And we lost quite a bit of parking for this facility, which we had as dirt, but the septic system for the center school has taken it up. So, parking is one. The other is, we could use some coal storage, the existing building, if it wasn't taken down for parking, or mix the parking with the building for equipment storage.
Do you have any sense of just how many, let's say you left the building up, how many parking spaces you would develop?
The back is hard because the grade is there, we'd have to slide out, so I don't know, 20-something?
Okay, thank you.
On the, on the north side?
Over here, sir.
Tim Reed, Redacre Road. Mr. Moderator, it's a point of order. What kind of voting are we going to do when the discussion is done on this?
We had no plans on doing an unusual, anything out of the ordinary for voting. I was going to point out before, before we voted, that if someone wished to make a motion for, for example, a paper ballot, they could, but we had no plans for the moderator to, on my own authority, call for a paper ballot.
At this point, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to express my disappointment at the inconsistency that's being followed from town meeting to town meeting on voting on large dollar sign articles. There's been some very passionate discussion about having written ballots, because people were afraid of what people would think of them if they voted one way or the other. And by going from paper ballots, at one time where it was a passionate discussion, to non-paper ballots, it gives the appearance that some people perhaps want to see how people are voting sometimes, and other times, they would like to hide their ballot. I'd like to see consistency in this. I've always advocated for open, open voting. I think that's the way town meeting should be run. But it disturbs me that in the future, maybe some decision will be made to paper ballot for a particular issue because people will want to hide their votes. I just would like to see some consistency here. Last time, we did paper ballots for big-ticket items, now we're doing open ballot? Please, I'd like some consistency.
Over here.
Ed DeLuca, 26 Crescent Street. So, this, as I understand it, we, the vote we have today is essentially designed, money for a planning document, and it, I'm really pretty much in favor of the project as a whole. The number that's been kind of bandied about, though, is that uncertain number of 9.4 million. And so, I guess the question, sort of as a general question, is where do you end up feeling a lot of pain? So, at 9.4, we're feeling kind of comfortable. If you gave, if it's 10% over at the end of your 600K, are you feeling, yeah, not so bad? At 15% over, are you saying, well, you know, we've spent our 600K, but let's move on to something else? So, where is it that you're kind of feeling the anguish about cost overruns from your
What the Oversight Committee attempted to do in arriving at the 9.4, we had a cost estimate for our conceptual plan, which was essentially a square-foot limit layout between the two services, fire service and the community center. That priced up at about 8.6 million. But what we did, not prejudicing the outcome, outcome of design development, is there are certain items that we didn't put in, that through design development, the next committee may decide is prudent for them, larger space, certain uses that we weren't there. And our feeling is, we bumped it up, took those ad alternate, potential ad alternates, added that essentially $800,000 to get to this 9.4. So, reasonably comfortable that this, when you go through design development, that that concept up there will fit. But it would, the key to this three-phase approach, which is, we, this first concept phase, which we've spent no new money for, we took all of the money that we had, $300,000 approximately, to get these buildings started, going to take another 300 now. So, you'll get another bite at the apple, and what we're hopeful is that the building committee that goes forward through design development, looking at these add or deduct alternates, come back the third time and say, okay, here's what you can get for the following amount of money, if you add or delete the following here. So, you'll get choices as to what you want built, and what you want for the use of floor space, and how much would be left over.
Thank you. Over here.
David Stallard, 59 Heather Lane. I'm sympathetic to the needs of the fire department. I'm concerned about this plan. In all fire stations I've seen, including the present Stowe Fire Department, the trucks exit out, straight out to the rain road and take off. In this case, the trucks have to turn almost 180 degrees to get into a fairly narrow driveway and get to a great road. And I'm wondering how practical this is going to be, particularly in heavy snow. Have, has this really been examined? Is this really the best location for the fire department in the Pompo building?
Chief Landry, did you want to address that?
A couple of things. When he mentioned a very small road coming around, we, we were looking into this. That road is actually a 24-foot road, which is actually the highway standards for a high-speed travel lane is 12-foot road. So, the width of the roadway that goes from front to rear is actually above and beyond any standards that, it meets the high-speed standard for the state of Massachusetts and Department of Transportation. Along with the other concept of, there is a distance from the street, it is a trend nowadays, actually, that a lot of times, the apparatus space are out in the rear. They're putting the administration facilities in the front due to handicap accessibilities, and pushing the apparatus to the rear. I, as the fire chief, in anything that we've looked into through our investigations, we haven't found any considerable negative impact to, to having the apparatus space out back. Actually, I found some, some positive benefits, that it gives us more area for training, instead of just being locked to a small apron like that we deal with now. This whole area would be open for the fire department to utilize as training space.
Thank you. Over here, ma'am.
Yes, hi, Elizabeth Michaud, Great Road. I live very near to the Pompo School, and I love this plan. I think it, I'm very impressed to see how well it's been thought out, and the combined use is great, and the economic, the services that we'll get for the, for the value look really terrific. And I just would like to hear a little bit more about how it's going to affect the existing site, just because there are a couple of uses for the larger property. One is that there's a very nice wetland immediately adjacent to the Pompo School, and I'd like to hear how it will affect the wetland. And the, well, I'm guessing, is the soccer field behind Pompo School going to continue in use? And there's a small playground that some people might like to hear about that's behind Pompo School currently. So, I just think people might like to hear about those things, but I love the project, and I think it's terrific, and I'm in favor.
Mr. Wrigley, could you address that?
Speaking to future use of the soccer field, this visual shows a planned sidewalk. Again, hard buffer between the egresses to the right side, that's a sidewalk that goes all the way around the edge of the property for the express purpose of allowing the current parking down here for use of the flyer, and then you can walk, so... walk so that you're not coming over to this side of the building where the apparatus might be going to or from. The sidewalk will take you all the way around to the back, right up to the field, which is what they do now. It is interesting to note that to the west of the property comes out to Harvard Road. And in fact, we can put a, you know, grubs, cut some trees down, grubs some, I say we, I'm, I'm not presupposing that anybody else has agreed with this yet. I, I've had a brief discussion about that prospect. But additional parking off Harvard Road, property, the west edge of this property, which we own, could bring you straight to the soccer field from that latitude, possibility.
Thank you. Over here.
Oh, the, the playground at this moment, to be relocated, it won't remain where it is. But on that site, up towards the potential where the soccer field is, again, for, so that there's no incompatibility of space shoes for the paved area where the parking is now.
Daisy Dear Moon, Meeting House. In my sixty-six years of attending town meetings, here in Concord and in Lexington, I have never before been given the opportunity to solve so many problems with one vote. We have the best fire department around, and believe me, if you've ever ridden in the ambulance in the middle of the night with the care that these guys give you, you do really appreciate them. Our food pantry is extraordinary. Their workers work hard. It's physical work. You're lifting cans and vegetables and trying to assure people that you don't look down on them because they need help. The COA is the envy of Concord and Acton because we do so much more than they do with so much little. Why is it that we have such wonderful people working for us, and we treat them so badly? We are fortunate indeed to have Bill Wrigley figuring these things out for us. He's tight with a penny, and thank God he is. My husband, when he worked for him, he used to call him Dollar Bill. I think it's time we rewarded our public servants and get them, making them work in deplorable situations.
Thank you. Over here. No applause, please. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, this isn't a popularity contest. Over here, please.
Yeah, Alan Fieris of Red Acre Road again. I mean, I agree with Daisy. There's a lot about this plan that's to be lauded, and, you know, I'm very sympathetic with the needs of the fire department and the other, other Council on Aging and the Recreation Committee. But there's just one fairly large niggling issue that I'm still bothered by that had, and I'm troubled that it hasn't been discussed tonight. Probably anywhere else in the country where there's a town meeting and they're discussing building a new fire department, the main issue people are going to be talking about is response time. You know, an expanding town, population is growing, they're talking about a new fire station, and the people who are supporting it, the fire department and the town government, will probably argue that the town should pay for it because it will improve response times. Here, by moving from where we are in the center of town out to Pompo, we are clearly going to be having longer response times to a significant part of the town. Now, I live way up on Red Acre Road, and I know a number of people here who do as well. But it's not just people up in the far northeast. The fire truck has to go through the center of town now to go up South Acton Road, to go up West Acton Road, to go up Boxboro Road, parts of Taylor Road, but not even the north side. On the south side of town, it's going to take longer response time to get to White Pond Road, to go all the way down Route 62 to the south side of town now. You're going to have better response times on the west side of town, the southwest side of town. Now, I know there is a measure that fire departments use. You can actually track the total response time for all of your runs in a year. Add it up. I'm curious to know, overall, for the whole town, not just for me on Red Acre Road, how much longer the response time is going to be? There's a town-wide measure of response time. I'd like to hear from the fire department what that increased number is, because it is going to be an increased number, and we should all worry about that. This is, our house is burning down, or this is calling the emergency response truck. So it's going to be an increased response time for many more people than it's going to result in a shorter response time. Can we get some data about this so we can make a real decision about public safety?
Very quickly, chief, if we could?
Just a couple of things that are considering factors with this response time also. It's something called turnout time. That's your actual time in your facility from when the call is received and you actually respond. The exact distance is point-six mile, you're six-tenths of a mile out of the center of town at this point. We've done some coverage studies. I don't have specific numbers because there's a lot of different variables. We are covering a broad area of the town a little bit quicker, the north end towards Harvard Acres, which is a number of houses, actually a number of residential homes in that area. We actually are a little closer to that from our location. There are some areas we are away, but the key was, is when we look at the facility and, and some of our spatial needs that are going to be met by moving to this location, any move is going to change it. If we go to 323 Great Road, we're outside the center. We may have to work with a pinch point coming back to the west. There's always going to be a concern unless you're dead center of the town. We do feel like we've looked at a bunch of situations, and with, with what our turnout time would be better because of having a facility where you can get ready right there and actually get on the vehicles in non-congested work conditions, we feel like we may be able to add enough to our times that we can probably, we don't have any specific data right now, but we're, we're looking that our, our numbers are not going to be that far off our actual total response times at this point. But there is chance, there is ways to look into it deeper. I just don't have them now.
Thank you. Over here.
Ellen Sturgis, Canterbury Road. I guess I, I have a couple of questions, but I'll stay with the one, which is around the community center concept. I mean, I think it's long overdue. The Council on Aging gets better space, especially, as Daisy said, for all the great programs they're doing, and the food pantry has been overcrowded for, since I volunteered twenty years ago. But there's a lot of other groups in town that could use community center space, and I frankly don't believe anyone's going to be interested in renting that big gray area. So I'm wondering if it was opened up to all the other groups that, when we did the, I can't even remember what the, the committee was called, many years ago, somebody was on it before, on, on sort of Needs of the Town. There was a whole lot of groups, the smaller volunteer, all volunteer groups that needed space, and I'm wondering if they'd be invited into this, the community center space.
Mr. Wrigley?
Part of the function of design development is to refine concepts, and that's what we've got here. Broadly defined, we have, for a community center, a large activity room, multipurpose, rec center programs, Council on Aging center programs, and yet-defined groups that through design development, next six or nine months, will identify and define additional community service organizations or other departments that can be purposed by this. We have the luxury of being able to take roughly ten thousand square feet that, right now, is going to be, going into design development, vacant, not labeled for any particular use. And we did get a commercial appraisal done. One of the complaints the first go-around is that it was thought, conceptually, could you rent some of this, make some money off it? The point is, you can potentially, Dom Paglis, I don't know if he's here, but Don owns a professional commercial appraising company. He's our chief assessor. Extremely good professional, thoughtful person, worked up for us, and I want to thank him at no charge, a substantial, detailed workup on marketing. The fact of the matter is, no surprise to anybody here, that the market has been trending down for several years. There's the vacancy rates in the area. What he did is, he similarly situated buildings for similar use, commercial, business, the area, six towns that he, abutting communities, high vacancy rate. This space has two disadvantages. One is, it's a large space, not, there's no subdivision of interior space. He recommended at least cutting down to no more than four thousand square feet. And the building, when it was designed, not, not plentiful with sunlight for windows. And so we bring some disadvantage to a disadvantaged economy that at this moment doesn't show any improvement with regard to renting spaces. So reduce that space by either expanding our needs through this design development or leaving it there for potential expansion of the fire station, which originally wanted over seventeen thousand square feet. We couldn't accommodate it. The Oversight Committee dropped it down to twelve thousand five hundred feet to try to save money, and even that punched in at higher than the original estimate of seven-point-two for seventeen thousand. They could use expansion. As Ellen just stated, we have other community groups. So through design development, we can fill this out easily. The function room, we could use for town meeting. We can seat our building commissioner, seated at tables, two hundred-plus people, seated this way, four hundred people, four sixty total here, can run that air. Function rooms to rent out. If we can't rent space, we can rent the function room. Our own uses, retirement parties, Christmas parties, activity rooms for all of the rest of it. You have a kitchen. None of this is assigned to any particular, it's a community use. So, you know, nine, over nine thousand, almost ten thousand square feet of that space is not assigned to anyone. We have office space needs. We currently, in the town building, have on the third floor, four folks sharing space no larger than a closet. We have a veterans agent, we have a nurse, a social worker, and, and Dave won't say so because he, you know, I don't think he and the veterans agent get along, to tell you the truth, but there's four office space there. The rec director didn't mention it, but she's been, her office has been in the basement of the town hall since the beginning, and we also have the cemetery commissioner over in the town hall. The, the town hall costs twice as much as the town building to heat in the winter. Not insulated, money needs to go into that building. We need to get folks out of there, into the town building, into this space, just for efficiency purposes, upgrade from the basement space for office space and get a nurse and the social worker sharing space instead of four folks. I mean, this goes on and on when we've looked at it for a year for the use of the building.
Thank you, Bill. I'm, I'm quite happy with just the bookcase that I, that I need. Over here, sir.
Hi, Albert Haberly from 20 Indian Ridge Road. A quick question. The proposal is to spend six-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars on the plans, and regardless of where the funds come from, the proposal is six-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand. What contingency plans are in place should the project decide not to go through to recoup some or all of those monies?
Mr. Wrigley.
We could try giving the plans back to the architect, but I don't think that would work. I don't, there, there is none. I mean, essentially, you buy in now to a concept that's been described to you, that we've pre-designed, can only benchmark a cost. I used to work for an engineering company, can't possibly give you accurate numbers, and I wouldn't lie to you to say that we've done that. What you've got are industry benchmarks, pre-designed, which is why it's critical to go through design phase, come up with construction documents with add and deduct alternates that could vary substantially in the price of the project. We benched it at nine-point-five. On that concept, we think we can get the things we've talked about. You want more or less, you'll have those options when you come back, but the fact of the matter is, you buy in now, those plans will, the value of those plans is they'll sit there until some future town meeting decides to either cut and pace from them or do something with it.
Thank you. Over here, ma'am.
Ann Kirchman, 143 West Acton Road. I have a big concern, and that has to do with parking. I understand between Center School and Hale School, we only have a hundred and one parking places. Whenever we have a concert here, we have to hire shuttle buses from the Council on Aging, which limits us to just one bus, to transport people. We've lost our parking spaces now. With soccer games, fire people parking, elders parking, food pantry parking, rec department parking, this community use where you've maybe having two hundred for a party, I'm concerned about the parking. Without the parking, we just don't get the people in for town meetings or any other thing. We've lost a lot of our parking spaces. That's a concern. How many parking spaces are there now, and how many will there be there when this is fully active?
Mr. Wrigley, can you answer that?
One of the things we spent a great deal of time in developing the concept was the need for parking. And what we've benched here is maximizing parking, and we get nearly a hundred and twenty parking places. Daily, the fire station is not a destination stop for most. You have, you know, until I said that, I wasn't certain I was making a funny there. There's, there's a, there's four full-time firefighters and a chief during the day. And a call for, and most overwhelmingly, the calls are the ambulance, which are there, two, two folks jump in and leave. Not a lot of parking daily there, more than enough already planned for the back. In the front, with the separated parking, during the gay, again, you take the number, there's the director of the Council on Aging, there's three, two outreach workers, some volunteers, and all the rest, handful, there's nearly a hundred parking places in the front that on a day-to-day basis, we couldn't possibly fill. And it's, I don't, I, I can't recall the, and maybe the schools can tell me, but they have much less parking there now. When it's fully occupied as a school with teachers and kids and school buses and all the rest, we're, I think we're doubling what's there now, but we've maximized every space and under the scenarios that we work through, you're not going to, you're not going to schedule a function on a weekend evening, and we'll be scheduling the use of that building, you know, so that you've got incompatibility of space shoes and too many folks. But day-to-day, Monday through Friday, with a hundred, nearly a hundred places up front, we couldn't think of a scenario where we would have the need for more than that space up front. Because just looking at the workers, they're small-staffed, one or two folks, five at the most, they have a program of fifteen or twenty in the activity room. You start doing that, even with a couple going on at the same time, don't come close to ninety-five or a hundred spaces. And then we would, we would govern and control the large function rooms at night and on weekends. And given that the soccer folks use that now with much less space, and I've not, I mean, clearly would always need more parking, not heard that they can't manage it. And the other thing is, as I said, we've got potential parking to expand on the east side up by the field.
Thank you. Over here, sir.
Bill Booth, 14 Evelyn Road. I just wanted to come back to this response time issue for just a moment. I was concerned about that, so I kind of checked on it a little. A passenger car with no siren and no flashers, traveling within the speed limit, can cover the distance from Pompo School to the present fire station in less than a minute. So we're talking something under sixty seconds for a fire truck or an ambulance. And I, I have no expertise in this area, but I am absolutely convinced that this facility would more than make up that time in getting ready to go.
Thank you. Over here, ma'am.
Barbie Wolfenden, Heather Lane. I just wanted to say that the library, the Randolph Library trustees have voted overwhelmingly, in fact unanimously, to support this project. We were equally involved for two years with a wonderful building committee, also with architectural plans, and we were asked to look at possibly moving into Pompo. We were excited, hoped that that would work out. It did not work out. We're not going away, but we believe right now it's best for the community with the cost savings overall for this plan to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments, debate? A comment was made earlier about voting. This would be an appropriate time if someone wanted to make a motion for a paper ballot. The The moderator, I chose last fall to do a paper ballot, as I've said publicly previously, based on time, that it would save us time. I was also asked about that we didn't want the three projects competing with each other by having them in a certain order, and a paper ballot also improved that. I've said that although I'm very sympathetic to the concerns around voting, being that town meeting has previously voted on the issue, I didn't think that it was really my place to try to impose my views on whether or not a paper ballot was appropriate. So again, not seeing anyone getting up, if I don't see anyone in the next few seconds, we will proceed to a vote. And again, if, if no one wants to get up and make a motion for a paper ballot. So we will proceed to a vote. This article includes borrowing, and that requires a two-thirds vote. So all in favor of the motion under Article 35, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. There's a few opposed, but I believe I can call that passing by at least a two-thirds And we can move on to, just check one thing here, move on to Article 36. Mr. Hawkes.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 36.
You have a motion and a second. Capital planning, do you have a recommendation on Article 36? Mr. Perry, I believe.
We didn't vote on the no action.
Okay. Very good. The Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee supports the move for no action.
Is there any debate for no action? Seeing none, no action is a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? I will call that unanimously in favor of no action. Now, it's 10:15, 10:16, it's close to 10:30, where I said I take a sense of the meeting. How many people would like to continue on tonight and see how far we can get? Please raise your cards. All of you who wish to adjourn for the evening and come back and finish tomorrow night, please raise your cards. It looks like a clear majority is in favor of tomorrow night. That will actually require a motion, believe it or not. If I could ask one of the selectmen to please read a motion, who's available? Mr. Salvi.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn this session of the meeting and reconvene tomorrow, Tuesday, May 6th at 7:00 PM at this location.
Any debate of adjournment? Seeing none, all in favor of adjourning till tomorrow night at 7:00. All opposed? I will call that clearly more than two-thirds and the motion passes. We are adjourned.